Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everyone to the Town Board work session for February 11th, 2020. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence, remembering two very special people tonight. Nelson Mandela, who was freed 30 years ago today in South Africa. And here in Yorktown, remember Lynn Agello and the Agello family. Lynn was a teacher at St. Patrick's Elementary School for 30 years and passed away this week. And we remember her whole family in our prayers. Thank you.
Lynn was a special person for...
No, this is a work session. All right, we have a rather robust agenda, and we're going to jump right into it. Our first item on the agenda tonight is Landmarks and Preservation Commission. We have Lynn Briggs. Lynn, would you mind coming up? If you have members of the commission who would like to join you? Thank you. We have chairs right here and here.
Are you alone, or somebody back up?
Nancy. Hey, Nancy. How are you?
I haven't seen you in a long, long time here.
This morning.
So Lynn, we got some really exciting stuff that we're going to be talking about tonight that I am very pumped about. So why don't you, if you could, just brief us on...
Do you have copies of this? Because I made copies.
Yeah, why don't you pass them out for us? I think there's some in the binders, actually, probably.
All right. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to let us share these with you. What we'd like to do today is present three resolutions that we'd like consideration of the Town Board. And I know this is a work session, and we're exploring these, but let me just walk you through the three. If you have any questions, please jump in. The first one is to ask your help to authorize a name change for landmarks preservation. We want to rename ourselves to the Yorktown Heritage Preservation Commission. And the reason for that is, over the last two or three years when we've been doing this work, we often get people come up to us at different events and whatnot and say, you know what? Landmarks, limiting, too restrictive, I don't know if I want to get involved in that. And we've all experienced that over the course of time. So we thought, why not rename ourselves to Heritage Preservation Commission? Because it's a broader, more relevant concept, and it better describes what we do, frankly. Okay? So what we want to do is actually name ourselves something that supports the notion of preserving our heritage, whether it be natural heritage, built, historic, and cultural, the assets that we have, and we are replete with them in the town. So there was a phrase... I'm sorry?
Did you see whether or not that's a legal name that you were able to use?
Well, I went to the state and asked them to clear it. Yep, I went to the state Historic Preservation Certified Local Government People we work with, and they said, we're good to go.
Perfect.
As long as we get local approval.
Of course.
So there's a phrase that we kind of fell in love with that says, heritage is all things that make up our story, tangible and intangible, and as we value them, we must protect them. And it's that sort of framework that we use to want to rename ourselves. So when you think about it, we've been doing the broader context for a long time.
Right.
Okay? So in addition to traditional landmarks and homes of distinction, we've engaged ourselves in a lot of public outreach programs, not the least of which is lectures on our one-room schoolhouses, our disappearing architectural legacy. We've been involved in a lot of community events, like San Gennaro for the Yorktown Festival. And we conducted the first-ever preservation month celebration at the Halleck's Mill property with Dr. Brennan a couple of years ago, and then, which houses the first Yorktown post office. And then we've also launched the first preservation symposium at Hilltop Panover Farm last year that many people came to. We had a great attendance on that. So the bottom, and we've helped Alice celebrate our 230th birthday with tours of the Croton Heights hamlet. And we've got two programs underway where we're having youth of the community actually help clean up graveyards and grave markers. Shroboke people are working with us, as well as an Eagle Scout project. And then we're also creating something we're very excited about is a number of tours, digital tours, we can use on our iPhone of all of our historic sites. So we feel like what we do is consistent with the notion of heritage versus simply landmarks.
One of the things that I was going to ask the people that I'm working with, and you're one of my committees, and thank God I'm better, is that you make a presentation about what you do.
Okay.
Because I think that your group has particularly given us some really, really good presentations. I think that visually, it's better than you're sitting here talking about it.
Sure.
So I'd like you to...
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
I think it'd be great. And I think there's some opportunities that we're going to talk about shortly that I think will roll nicely into that type of presentation.
Win themselves to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a good... Thank you, Alice. Okay. So basically, we did get clearance from the state, and we think that if we're called Heritage Preservation, we have a better shot of executing our mission. So we'd like your support with that.
I remember that.
Okay.
Any questions from the board on this particular item?
This is really great.
Okay.
I knew that it was coming down the line. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Next.
Second one is, we would like to ask your help to adopt the term "cultural heritage tourism" as one of our primary strategic drivers. It's a term that's now used throughout a lot of municipalities to revitalize their communities, and essentially relates to people wanting to travel places that have artifacts and activities that authentically represent the stories of the people that live there, both past and present. And so it also, cultural tourism affects the destination where people go. And when they're interested in these things, they'll go where they are. And that includes attractions, monuments, landmarks, museums, culinary experiences, galleries, you name it, theaters, festivals, and neighborhoods that have significance culturally.
Oh, John Taggert.
John?
Come down.
John, you're being summoned.
John, come, come, come. I was looking for you, because she's talking about something that I'm going to work with you on.
Sure.
Yeah, please, grab a chair.
Grab a chair.
Leave the blue lines open, please.
Leave the blue lines open, according to the...
The man behind the curtain.
So if you think about our history, I think we'd probably agree that it's not fully understood, appreciated, or even leveraged.
Yep.
And it embodies a whole lot of things, all the way from the indigenous people who were settled here, to the Stephon Van Cortlandt Manor days, our early agricultural beginnings, the Revolutionary War, slavery, abolition here, Civil War, mills, commerce, dams, aqueduct, emergence of education in the one-room schoolhouses, another part of our heritage, and the impact of the railroad, as John well knows, and then the tourist boom that came about with resorts and colonies that evolved and emerged in our history. The loss of farms and urban renewal. There's so much here that we can celebrate and render more explicit. So we think if the board can really say, yes, cultural heritage tourism is one of our primary strategic and economic drivers, it makes a lot of sense, and will enable what we do a little easier.
Actually, you know, I meant to bring it up to you, Lynn, when I saw you, so if this is appropriate that we're seeing you. I was listening to News Radio 88 the other day. I think it might have been Sunday morning, when I was getting ready for the sun's breakfast, and they did a piece on the Pines Bridge Monument.
Oh.
I saw it, yeah. I saw it. It was online.
Did they really?
There's a whole article online about it as well.
Well, they...
Someone sent it to me.
Right, and they had, I believe the gentleman is actually on the...
I showed it to you.
I think he's a trustee and Buchanan.
Yeah, it's Dwayne Action Jackson.
Yeah, Dwayne was talking about it, which I sort of was like, well, why aren't they talking to us?
He's very sweet.
Oh, he's a really nice guy, yeah.
He's such a good guy. And he was at the Veterans Council.
He was at the Veterans Council. And he's also one of the people when they had the car packed with explosives down in Times Square.
Hence the name, Action Jackson.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that really I loved when I first started was the museum. And I hope you get more involved with Adella over there.
We spoke about it today.
And I remember I brought a Native American to the museum because I wanted to make sure the room was authentic. And he went through the room, and he said, you're fine.
Good.
John has a project that I told him I really want to work with him on. And again, it's part of that tourism. Do you want to talk about what you're going to be working on?
Bring the mic? Yeah, John's been busy. I've been keeping John busy.
Yeah, well, we've talked for a long time about this very thing, and in particular doing a historic trail. I always wanted to start with the Revolutionary War Trail, because we have some very important history here in Yorktown for that. And we have plenty of sites to make, to have enough mass to actually, I think, do that, which would entail, you know, obviously, educational materials at those sites, and, you know, maps and so forth, and guided tours. I don't mean guided by people, but guided with materials to take you around all of those sites. That could be expanded to all of the other history that we have, of course, but that's something that I've always thought that we should do since we have so much of it here.
Wouldn't it be, I think, interesting for all of us to get together here at a meeting that is video? Because I think there are a lot of people out there that would probably, you need more people than you probably already have to help you out, correct?
It's going to be an effort. It'll be an effort.
And there probably may be some, even some scouts that might want to help with us. But I think what you want, this is totally exciting, Lynn.
Right.
And part of what John was just talking about, I think, dovetails into the next item that you wanted to bring to us.
Right. So the next and final resolution is, you may recall that back in October, we invited a woman named Connie Kehoe, who is the Executive Director of RW Revolutionary Westchester 250 Initiative, and she's been driving that, doing a fabulous job. But essentially, what we saw there was an opportunity for us to leverage our Revolutionary War history in tie into the county. So this resolution has to do with the fact that the United States Congress passed in 2016, I think, Public Law 114, 196, which says that the U.S. government, through a formation of a commission, is going to commemorate and celebrate our independence. And so they've, it's legislation that the Congress is following. And so what I learned from all of this is, one, the state historian, Devin Lander, he's indicated he's going to support this with a lot of support, a lot of meetings and awareness creation. We learned that the New York State Parts and Recreation People, they're on board, and they want to get going. The Hudson River Valley Greenway folks are on board. The County of Westchester and Department of Tourism Office of County Executive are on board, and then the Westchester County Historical Society, all are supportive of this. So we've got a whole lineup of people committed to do this. So what we're proposing is the town of Yorktown form what we call the Yorktown 250 Organization. And it would be a committee that would literally partner with the country, the state, and the county, and then municipalities. We've already connected with Cortland to start working with them to really do the same thing, which is, in the next six years, which is when the celebration is, 2026, we've got a six-year horizon here, we can actually really do a great job laying out a master plan with all the programs and initiatives and partnering with everybody.
Totally agree.
So that's what that has to do. We'd like to have this committee be formulated as a subcommittee of our group.
Of your committee.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, we'd like your support with that.
Yeah, Lynn, thank you for all you do. And John, with all your knowledge of the railroad line, when Alice and I did the 230th birthday for the town of Yorktown, these guys here...
They were fabulous.
Were awesome. They did the heavy lifting that had to be done, and I didn't think Lynn thought that she was going to get as many people as she did riding in those tours, right?
We had to push people away, actually.
Right. And then John did an awesome job with the old Putt Line, amongst other people that did stuff, while Ed and I were embarrassing ourselves playing baseball and falling and sorts of things.
By the way, I just looked at that video the other day, and I saw you falling to the ground as you attempted to leave home plate.
I have to tell you, Tommy, that was one of the more, the reason I liked it was because as soon as we put out the message that we needed help...
We got it.
The room filled up.
Yeah.
The room filled up.
Yep.
And I think, Lynn, I think you guys, this is so, not only is it key for us, but also for the schools in Yorktown. It's important that they get to understand the history of our community. Because we have, you know, as a clerk, the records that are in that office, that have been in that office, are absolutely amazing, which takes us from a farming committee, community with slavery...
Yep.
To where we are today.
Today, yeah.
So I think this is fabulous.
All right. Thank you. And I want to, my...
I have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
How currently, year, current year, will be talking here, 2010? Because, you know, last 15 years, before I became a councilman, I was chairman of the museum. I have spent day and night over there, and every picture you want, I have it. Very nice exhibition done, right? John was there all the time. And we have honored the veterans, exhibitions, and technology, and science, and it was really, really, the guy came from West Point, and this is very nice, you know, so we have all... How far are we going to present here, to current or...
Yeah, I mean, we want to go back to our very beginnings and really build that picture. One of the things we want to do is actually build an authenticated history of Yorktown and get it supported by citations and research and all of that, a definitive history of our town.
We talked about digitizing our, there's a digital effort that you and I talked about earlier today.
Yeah, we want to, well, there's a lot, digitizing our, we don't have an archive that particularly captures all of our records yet, so we want to get a digital archive going. And we do use, I think it's picturing our past, or we use that. But it's not accessible to people, so there's...
See, you have, I think that we have to open your eyes to stuff that you may not be aware of that's been digitized. The clerk's office has a, probably the oldest records...
Okay.
That are in town, that I'm pretty sure you haven't seen.
Okay.
The ones that are in the room.
Microfilm was digitized through laser fiche.
Well, we can use the microfilm.
So we, yeah, but that's all things that we can...
We were just going to, there's a grant that we can get where we can do a digital archive assessment, and just inventory everything we have, and then decide what makes sense from there.
So Lynn, I had reached out to some reenactors to see if they were interested in doing something, but a thought came to mind, sitting here, Yorktown has living history in schools, Christie Pasquale, I think it is. That would be like a phenomenal project for them, maybe a project each year building up.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. And actually, one of the people who live over in Huntersville came to me the other day, and they went to Francis Tavern, a celebration last, I think it was the 330th year, 300th celebration of Francis Tavern last fall. There were a couple there, the Enzlos, who use 1700s musical instruments and actually have written songs about the history of the 1700s. And they're now coming to Yorktown on the 17th of October...
Awesome.
To perform at the community church, and we're going to, they're going to present a story about spies in Yorktown.
That's awesome.
So, anyway, that...
We'll do a lot of advertising for that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
So anyway, thank you very much.
Listen, I appreciate it. I do want to try to keep us as close to getting to schedule, and we're already over, but this is great, Lynn. No, thank you. We could talk all day about this stuff with you. So I appreciate it.
I was going to help. I just had to get better.
Lynn, thank you and your group for all you do.
Thank you.
Barry Liebman up next, Yorktown Stage. I do want to say, Alice, I'm very glad to see you're here tonight.
Larry, after the history, the current.
Have you been back? Yeah, we got some great things that we're working on.
Yeah, the current.
How you doing tonight, Barry?
I'm doing okay tonight.
Hey, Barry.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for inviting me.
Of course. You know, I still, my son still is running around the house saying buongiorno to everybody because he went to Pinocchio at the stage.
And you know what? It was awfully nice that you were there, the Cub Scout evening.
I was in the back, but I wasn't only in front of it. I came hour before, and then I had to go.
That was really a good night.
Yeah. Carol and I wanted to come, but my goddaughter had a different agenda.
So many people so excited about it, I don't...
It's amazing how you like...
I guess we'll do it again next year.
I hope so.
But I'm going to hopefully get involved and see if I can save them some money.
So Barry, what do you, Barry, tonight we're talking about a liquor license, and I want you to explain some of your ideas behind that, and...
Well, it was on a list of many things that we needed at the theater, but...
We have 15 minutes, so you have 17 items.
15 minutes, I could do it in one. A liquor license will make us money. We can, we had two comedians at our theater last year. I don't know if anybody saw them. Both of them were attended by this young and up-and-coming comedian, Anthony Rodea. He's so hot. It's like, somebody asked me, can't we get Manas Skalko? I said, nobody can get him, he's too hot. But Anthony, it was hysterical. He was there, I think 200 people came to the first one. His following came to the second one, there were 350 people.
Awesome.
And unfortunately, we just were happy to have him, so we didn't even take a cut. So we were, we just gave him a straight rental. He's willing to come back at some point and bring all his minions with him. I mean, these people have followed.
Yeah, they do.
Every one of the people who came said, do you have any wine or anything? I said, no. You know, we've talked about it before, the boards before, that's been one of the first things we talked about, starting way back in 1998. And when I say "talked to," I've spoken to every supervisor, basically, about it that I could speak to, some I may have missed. But it's an idea that can make money, and it's not only money for us, I couldn't care less.
I don't see it as just money, but it's in the overall experience.
Well, I think you're...
It's an experience, but the town can split in the proceeds.
And I agree. I think when people go to the theater, and even, you know, I've been in the theater where there are young kids, and, 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 yeah, they're there, and people are having wine or whatever, I tend to think that is one of the places where they should have a glass of wine if they want to have a glass of wine.
It's only wine and beer, by the way.
That's all.
I was going to ask that question.
No, it comes, the license is actually a cabaret, like, it comes with alcohol, but we're not interested, we're not getting bartended.
Wine and beer.
Yeah.
They have a specific license, just from wine and beer.
Wine alone would be fabulous.
I think that's a nice thing to have for people who are maybe going out.
And they expect it. I mean, people would expect when they go to the theater to have a, I mean, a bottle of wine costs $10.
Right, right.
Well, your competition has it.
How about there's six drinks in there?
That's Ed's point, though.
I mean, that's a lot.
Any other theaters that you're competing with have it.
Everybody has it.
Right, so...
Everybody has it.
Okay.
And the other theaters, one of them, I think, has liquor, but I don't know that that's that important. Wine and beer is enough to enjoy the experience.
Correct, right.
You know, people like a little glass, I'm going home to a glass of wine after this. So I like wine, you know, it's just...
Yeah, it makes sense.
I think it's very nice to do when you, you know, it...
If we can get it done.
Even if it's, people expect that when they're going out, you know, they want something nice when they're going out, you know, maybe different for the 2:00 matinee for, like, Pinocchio, maybe that's a little different.
Right, right.
But certainly...
Yeah, I don't know that we need it for Pinocchio, or Lion King Kids is coming up.
You have the Sound of Music coming, right?
We have Sound of Music.
You have the Sound of Music coming.
High School Musical, which is family-oriented over the summer.
Right.
And hopefully, we'll have Beauty and the Beast, or some other great show in November. Then we have, we'll talk...
But I think, again, I think it goes back to, not just, for me, it's not just the revenue, it's the experience.
Yes.
And so we're trying to enhance people's experience at...
I'd like to bring more people here.
You have candy?
Oh, he's got candy.
We always have candy.
He's got candy.
But we talked about getting people from other parts of the county up here.
And if your competition has it...
Because everybody who comes here enjoys it. They stay here all day.
Yeah.
I think it's an appropriate thing to do.
Well, I did some research, I mean, the license is, I think I have to apply.
You do, and that's what I was going to tell you is...
You were going to tell me. I looked at it, I have to, which is, I don't have a problem with that. I'm already fingerprinted.
But you gotta go, has to go through the card.
Yes.
Yes. But at the SLA, I have to do the first application.
They have to agree to make it part of their policy to do it.
Right. And it said, I don't even have to own the premises, I just have to show them a lease. And...
But I think as a landlord, we have to authorize him...
Yes.
To... Right, no, yeah, we'd have to do a resolution to authorize this.
There are some issues.
Very similar to the Par three golf course, what we did, authorizing them to apply to the DEC. So it's very similar.
And that's a sports license. I couldn't find any of them that, any of the clauses that had anything to do with us, except cabaret liquor, which allows a person to serve beer, liquor, beer, wine, liquor, and cider.
He's right there.
Yeah, no, we can add this issue with this.
Adam can help you.
Okay, I'm happy.
Oh, can I ask you, before we go get the license, where are you going to put it in? What section, in the back?
Oh, no, we put it in the concession stand and have a table for candy. No, this has to be contained. We have, and Steve Wolf, you met him the last time you were there, you know him.
Yep.
He's perfect. He's a Yorktowner, he's old.
He is old.
And he has been a bartender, but what does it take to be a bartender? Here's a glass of wine, and here's a bottle of beer. So it's, hi, Ed.
Beer, wine, beer, wine, and soda.
Beer, wine, and soda.
And Barry, you do know I have a little bit of a history with the hospitality and bar industry?
Oh, yeah, yes.
No, 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 if you, just getting things in line and...
I'm ready and available to talk to anybody.
I think the board in the future needs to pass a resolution authorizing you to go do it.
And we're going to have to talk to them, because it says upon a premises specializing capacity for at least 600 persons.
Right.
Well, the theater itself has a capacity of 576, that's what the occupancy is.
Right.
But that doesn't include the lobby.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right, right, right.
It's got to be another 50 or so. So I think we're covered with that.
Well, you know, that's part of the SLA process.
Okay.
You know, and I'll walk you through it, and I think that Adam and Ed can definitely assist you.
Have you considered doing black and white movies there?
We talked about that the other day.
Talked about that as well, it's one of the 17.
I got a big skill to Paramount.
We would be, we would love to.
The way we left that off, we were gonna talk to Jeff Schneider, who we were talking to, I haven't reached out to him yet, about seeing what the cost. So previously, there was a budget, it was budgeted for a projector.
This has been on your, from the last regime. And this, do you remember, it was always in the budget.
Yeah.
Not in the budget anymore.
It was not in this year's budget, it was never purchased, so.
Did we buy a screen?
No, it's not a screen that we need, it's the projector.
It's the projector, he has something that was in use.
I have a sight, that blue thing on the back of the stage, which projects beautifully, but, I mean, it's great. But we could get a screen, that's the cheap part.
How much is a projector?
Oh, God, over $20,000.
It's over $20,000. So, so, but what we, what we discussed, though, was seeing how much would it be to rent one, do a few events to see what the response is.
See what kind of tendence is.
And if we feel that it warrants purchasing the equipment, because it's, you know, considerable, then, then we can move forward.
And again, we have to consider, Barry does old school advertising.
I don't, I do now.
You do old school advertising.
I don't think so anymore.
Yeah, you do.
We don't pay for advertising anymore.
Okay, 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 okay.
Well, I'll talk to you about that, you'll let me know.
There is a new way to do advertising.
Love it. We have somebody, we have an advertising.
But I'm saying that you have a whole government channel.
Yes, I know, he told me the other day.
You know, I think.
You know, the building use, if somebody had a party or something, and there was a special requirement from Ellis to have some alcohol, right?
Well, that, that's right, the clerk can do separately, that's different.
That's a one-time shot.
He wants a policy, he wants to change the policy.
There's no reason why we can't get a, we're not within the distance to a church. It's not technically a school anymore.
You're fine.
Yeah, we're, we're fine. Thank you, Alice.
Councilman, do you have a question?
You know, many people don't realize what a jewel that the Yorktown Stage actually is in this community.
I know you do, Tom, thank you.
I, I, I enjoy it. My wife and I both go there often, we'd like to go more. And I think the experience of just being able to get up and get a glass of wine or beer at the intermission would be fabulous. Along with the addition of movies, to your point, Matt, to, to, to rent it, let's see how it goes.
Movies are the best thing.
Yeah.
Movies, there is no cost, except for Steve Wolf.
Right.
Who will run the evening.
Right.
And sell the popcorn or what, there's, nobody gets paid, I don't get paid.
You know, I started.
Nobody gets paid.
Right, and I think it'd be great.
And we don't have to pay for the movie.
I agree.
With my daughter.
That's great.
So she was in the Dan Bell School, and they, once a year, they'd have their, their year round, and every year she'd get dressed up and go, "No, I don't wanna go in."
What, what are the projectors now?
We have someone, we just, I just, we just need to make contact with them.
We have a local Yorktown, he's involved, one of the big guys.
The reason, the reason I ask that is because I have a, a, a acquaintance.
My former neighbor.
Yes, your former neighbor.
An acquaintance that has reels of film, and I don't know what, what it is, and I will be able to find out.
Well, I mean, reels of film are fine, but, you know, we, we just wanna stick to CD and the DVD.
Oh, it's CD and DVD, okay.
That's what we want. We want, we can rent it for a dollar, whatever it's supposed to.
Right, whatever he's willing to.
Not even, right? And if you don't charge, and we won't charge, we aren't gonna ask for money, we have to pay Steve.
Dunton Boulevard, that was like my favorite.
Oh, my God, please, I'm with you, and I'm a lot older than you. I have a birthday next year, we'll double your age, next week, excuse me. But, yeah, no, these are the things that we can do there.
Yeah, I agree.
Yorktown Stage is just going along a natural way. Can I just tell you something, I think Ed probably knows this, we got to the end of the year. I'm here 22 years. Last year is the first year, and nobody knew about this, nobody knows about it, was the first time ever that I did not put money back into the business. First time ever, and I don't intend to ever do it again.
Isn't that wonderful, though?
Oh, it's wonderful. If I have to put money back in the business, I'm leaving. And let Orgy do it, you know, Orgy.
Let Orgy take it.
But all the new things that you're adding, it's only gonna add to your.
Well, that's what I want, I wanna get people into Yorktown.
Yeah, that's the whole thing, it's just part of the overall experience, that's, you just go back to that word.
There's a lot here, I mean, the food alone is getting better, I just wish we had more of it.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
My lantsmen are over at the Greek restaurant, I'm Greek.
I was gonna say, Greek restaurants always got it.
That restaurant's always, so I go in there, yeah.
Well, Barry, we, we appreciate it, I think that, so, you know, the board will have to pass a resolution authorizing you to move forward, obviously, as a tenant. But it sounds rather supportive here, any last minute questions?
Is there any sign change that no food allowed, or food and alcohol allowed in the theater?
We don't have no alcohol.
No, 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 whenever, if, whenever heavy, you're gonna have to change the sign, you have to no food allowed, okay?
No food allowed, oh, we still, we have that sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No food allowed, yeah.
Perfect, Barry, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry.
Are we on time, Laura?
I wanna, I do wanna chat with you.
Okay, next, John Landy, Building Department. Was I, was I on time for that one? Oh, thank you, thanks, appreciate it, we're starting.
Hey. Hey, John.
We have a couple things.
How's school going?
Hang me now.
Hello, John.
All right, so sit right over here, away from the blue lines, because he's gonna yell at you. Nope, now you're in, now, there you go.
There you go.
Perfect. All right, so John, you wanted, you asked, hey, gentlemen, excuse me, if you could either step to the side.
You're in the blue line.
So John wanted to bring up fee schedule to come discuss to the town board, we had a very brief conversation.
I was running out of White Plains, and I just got here, so, and what, what I basically just.
Summarize it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna summarize and ask permission to look at it, get a gathering from the towns around us. Right now, what I believe, and tell you why I'm thinking what I'm thinking. I'm here over two years. Our fee schedule, in my opinion, is too generalized. I was just talking to John Tegater about it, like, Lowe's, their shell is a dollar a square foot, or a $2 a square, so it's the same price for Lowe's it is for a small shopping center. You know what I mean? It, there's not a sliding scale here, so it's gotta be looked at more.
And do other municipalities have sliding scales?
Yes. What they do is they take value of construction, and that's really should, how it should be, more, I mean, Tom, you know, you work in a lot of towns, it's, and, like, if I applied the code properly.
I got a lot of complaints when I heard people say that whatever new way you're, you're applying fees is, is wrong.
Well, it's the better way, because I was just gonna say, for a roof, it says I gotta charge a dollar a square foot. You got a 20,000 square foot roof that's 20 square, it's gonna cost you $20,000 for a roof, for a permit.
But there are other fees that you've had that dramatically increased once you came to this new compilation of.
I'm only applying what the code says. I'm, because, again, like, we're saying the minimum charge is $300. That's insane. If you're doing a small bathroom, I gotta charge you $300.
That's a lot of money.
That is a lot of money.
That's why I'm here, I'm saying this is nuts. It's gotta change, it's gotta be.
Can you bring stuff for us to look at?
Well, I would like to come up with a fee schedule for you to work with.
Mr. Rodriguez, could you work with Mr. Landy on, on a, I'd like to see also some type of analysis of other towns? So if you can, we can compare apples to apples on this?
I wanna bring it all together.
Right, this way we can make an educated decision.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, it's what is happening is I'm applying.
The law.
The law, to the fee schedule, and, which was not, we're making people get permits before, according to the code, that our department, as we know, did not do.
Well, and it's not only our department, there are other towns that don't do it.
Hmm, everything I look at, everything we're charging.
I think we checked some stuff, we checked some stuff, and there were other towns that didn't charge.
Didn't charge for?
Some of the things you charged.
I'm only going by the code.
What, what in particular?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know.
I don't remember, it was a year ago, we looked at it.
Like, I know you asked me to look around for.
Yeah.
Sink?
I don't charge for a sink.
We decided, we decided to look at that, and the only thing any other community charged was $35 for the county permit.
Well, I'm telling you, I have no choice according to our fee schedule.
What do we, what do we charge in?
$300. Our minimum charge is $300 for a permit.
So obviously, so it's, 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 like I said, let's, let's do a, yeah, it is way out of whack. So let's do a comparison with other municipalities, if you can work with Mr. Rodriguez, so we can see, you know, several examples, okay? And this way we can update.
I even brought this to the town board, I'm sorry, but prior to this board.
You did, you did.
And that's why I came up with, let me just charge the minimum for a roof, otherwise it was like $15,000, $20,000 for a roof, because condos were huge and they were gonna get hammered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard.
So I think, I think the right way, I think the right way for us to proceed here is you work with Mr. Rodriguez, come back to a future work session with a comparison, a comprehensive comparison, as, you know, as best as we can pull together, and then we can discuss some proposals to update the code and update the fee schedule.
Perfect, because same with the, the commercial, that should be much different than residential. And right now, it's.
The same.
Same.
And I'm, absolutely, I think you should bring it forward, but let's, obviously, I know you're, you're going to classes right now.
No, I'm done.
You're down, you're done, oh, you're, you're last day today.
I'm just coming home now.
Did you get a hundred?
I always get a hundred.
So if you can work with Mr. Rodriguez on this, and I think that the board, obviously, is receptive to the fact that we wanna bring some comparison back, so we can analyze it and make an informed decision and update the code and the fee schedule as needed.
Yeah, and, yeah, and add things that needed to be added and take things away.
Yeah, listen, but, you know.
I agree with you.
I'm fine with updating and professionalizing, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, because bathroom, sometimes when they build a bathroom, it's a, we all know the size of a bathroom, 10 by 10 or 10 by 7. My minimum charge, according to our fee schedule, is $300.
But some bathrooms, you can put in a $100,000 bathroom too, you know what I mean?
But you can.
I hear you, John, I hear you, loud and clear. If you can just work with Mr. Rodriguez, bring me back some type of analysis that we can compare other municipalities. Yes, there is, would you like me?
I'm gonna go get some coffee.
Well, we can, we can have.
John, would you email me the current fee schedule, please?
It's online. See, that's the other thing, I have to work from two different ones. There's one for mechanical, which is based upon amount, cost of construction, and there's another one that's, I, it's insane.
We gotta combine them.
Yep, gotta combine them and make it easier and, and more friendly to the public.
I'm with you, no problem.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John, appreciate it, we'll see you bright and early tomorrow. All right, next, John Tegater, Solar Law. And for the board, members of the board, the draft, the latest draft is in the.
The one you last saw.
The one we last saw is in the binder, this is just a conversation started to reintroduce legislation. John and I have sat in quite a few meetings regarding solar projects, and we've received a bunch of feedback from contractors about the, about some potential amendments to the original draft. But there's clearly an appetite in the town to see some sort of recognition in the code to allow these projects.
Yeah, otherwise they're, you're not able to do them.
Exactly.
Unless it's on your house or on top of your commercial building and is benefiting only you, so I asked that, or essentially, I'm here to talk about getting your go-ahead to reintroduce this and get it on the, this, your agendas to start moving through the review again. My next step, if you agree. Would be for.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Would be for me to, you know, look at some of the comments that we've had and.
Your next tab.
Collate them for you and then make some proposed changes if warranted, so that would be my next step, if you're willing to go ahead with it.
Can you, just one more time, I, we just mentioned it briefly, but I wanna make sure everyone's clear, the problem that we have, though, is that the code doesn't recognize solar, other than on an individual's house.
It doesn't even recognize it on an individual's house, but, right, that would be an incidental accessory use, as would a generator, let's say, generators are not called out in the code, but they're allowed, of course. Yeah, we're gonna do a road trip.
It's so fun.
Let's go. Where do you wanna, do you have one in mind?
There's a couple in Orange County that I think we can get to see.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great, let's go take a look.
I'd like to visually see what it looks like.
Yeah, I agree with you, I mean, because we were sitting in a meeting about battery storage, and it's not the same, but somewhat related, and it was brought to our attention about the Tesla battery storage that's behind Staples, and you don't understand it unless you go see it.
Exactly.
And it actually really helped me comprehend what we were trying to accomplish with that legislation, and I agree with you, so count me in.
And we can also take a trip to Manhattanville College, which did the canopy over the, you know.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, I think that would be instructive as well, so. One of the places you could just take a quick, right, do you ever go to Woodbury Commons?
Yeah.
As you're going down the hill, before you start going back up the hill, look towards the throughway.
You see them?
You'll see the other array you ever wanna see in your life.
Now, there are a lot of farms that have, that wanna do it, because they've got areas that, in the back, where you will not be able to see it.
Right.
And they need to make money.
Yep.
In order to keep the farm working.
Right.
We have one here.
We have one here.
I know we do.
I, I was in the New Jersey, you know, end of Holland Tunnel, or the new building, every building, just in front of the, you know, the, the station, the good ferry and all that, only parking for recharging.
Yeah, yeah.
All of them.
Electric cars?
EV, EV car chargers.
And then you can park your car on, on, you know, only Sunday, other than, it has to be that kinda car.
Are we gonna get electric car chargers?
Well, we do.
Yeah, well, we have them.
We have Tesla.
We have Tesla over by BJ's.
Over by BJ's.
Really?
And they put in, I think, 10 chargers.
Correct.
And then, several years ago, there was one put in in front of Staples for generic cars, so that's been there for a few years.
Yeah, I.
Will Tom take this camera out?
I, I know.
John, we used to have IBM electric car charger, okay?
Yeah.
About six.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
Oh, I'm sure IBM has them, yeah.
More than 25 years ago, okay?
IBM's getting in the game, that's for sure.
25 years ago, yeah, do you know, something new?
Yes, they are.
This may all be moot in a few years, as a company that's trying to design all windows to have solar technology in the window itself.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have, they're experimenting and have roof shingles that have.
Yeah, roof shingles, yeah, we've seen those.
Tesla, I believe, is making those, aren't they?
Yeah, but they had a little.
They might be.
They had a pushback on it, on, on project not working as well as possible.
This is great, I think that we should continue the conversation, and by all means.
When do you wanna go on a road trip?
Maybe next week or the following.
Okay.
I'll see if I can set a couple of things up. Maybe we do it in one day.
Yeah, that'd be great.
A little bit of traveling, but.
That's okay.
I think it's all right.
No problem.
Road trip.
Hi, Jenna. John, thank you.
All right, so I'll try to get this back.
Anything else you need from us?
Nope, I'm gonna move forward with it and let you know when I have something ready to go back on the agenda.
Fantastic, and as for battery storage, we did refer that out, and we have gotten some feedback, I believe, correct?
And the planning board has, we're formulating their responses from last night's discussion.
From last night's discussion, great, awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Okay, Mr. Rundell, and look at this, we're back, back under schedule, how do you like that, Mora?
You know, you're really, you're really cursing yourself, you know.
That's okay, Kenny's not gonna, he's not gonna do me. Kenny, how are you? Oh, Ken, it's great to see you, thanks for being here.
Kenny.
Kenny, why did you do this before you needed?
Another one, that's great, Tom.
I didn't do that, he did that.
Personnel to do this.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Doing everybody on the bus this week. Jesus.
Because this will make you money.
Holy cow.
So that's what we wanna talk about.
I didn't do that.
So, Ken, one of the things that was brought up at the end of last year was the commercial water meters.
Too long.
Could you, could you give us a, just brief us quickly on what the issue is regarding the commercial water meters? Yep, and.
Put in one issue, maybe dozen different, okay?
Yep, here, I got you, one right here. You got it? Do you want to go over to Adam?
Excuse me. So, good evening. As the supervisor said, I'm here to talk to the board about commercial water meters. There's a law in the town code on the books now that the commercial water meters have to be tested every three years. It's my experience, and the results get sent to the water department, and if the tests don't pass, the water meters are inaccurate, they have to be repaired or replaced. It's my experience that this has not been done for the water district. We've talked, I've come in front of the board quite a few times, talked about that we really need to do this. We, we have a program now that will accept all the test reports over at our office. Now, it's just a matter of putting it in, but the one thing I'd like to talk to the board about is the language in the town code for, for testing. And more specific is the non-compliance, okay? What I would not like to see is, we put a lot of work into this, and there's a lot of behind the scenes and a lot of time and energy that goes into this testing, and the property owners not respond. So what I'd like to see, what I'd like to see is if we could change the language in the town code with some type of penalty, because what happens is, the ratepayers in the district, if the commercial meter is running, let's say, at 80%, we're losing 20% revenue.
Right.
For the most part, right? So the ratepayers throughout the district have to eat that 20%, right? So I'd like to see everybody pay their fair share. I, I think it's, it's something that really needs to be done. I think it will also lessen our water loss for the year, so every year we monitor what are, what sold, what we purchased, what we sold, and the percentages do, that's missing is from fire, you know, firefighting, water main breaks and everything, and for 2019, we were actually, we did very, very good.
Awesome.
But, you know, we worked to get that number down every year.
Yeah, of course.
And I strongly believe that this testing of the water meters, of the commercial water meters, will bring that number down, and it'll also have everybody paying their fair share.
I think one of the reasons they don't do it is because there's no penalty. You give them a penalty, they'll do it.
Kenny, how many meters are we talking?
We're talking probably about 350 to 400.
Yeah.
15 years.
Right, now, you know, it has here for every three years tested, quite often the times, the, the people that we have come in, even if it's residents, that have a bad meter, let's say, they're never tested, all of a sudden we catch that they're using an exorbitant amount of water, and then we charge them for it. I don't know that three years is, is.
You wanna shorten that timeframe?
I wanna shorten that timeframe, I think three years is too long.
Okay.
Because let's say, over the course of a year, they, I don't know, can't find 80,000 gallons, I, I'm just using a number. They're not gonna be paying that much in return if their meter is indeed bad, that it shorted the town 80,000 gallons worth of water.
Shorted the residents of Yorktown.
Or the residents of Yorktown. Yeah.
I just wanna ask, Mr. Rodriguez, I know that you were working with Kenny on this, any thoughts on changing, two questions, we talked about, first off, We talked about, uh, first off, what do you thought, your thoughts on changing time, the time limit from three years?
I think that's something we need to look at.
Mike, Mike.
That's something we need to look at. Um, Mr. Rundell and I haven't discussed that feature, um, so I need to get his thoughts. He's an operational expert.
We did do a slight check on other municipalities and my understanding is that there is a sta-, you know, I don't want to call it a standard, but other municipalities or a number of municipalities have a penalty associated with non-compliance.
Absolutely, absolutely. And?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, they do.
So Kenny, is that any?
Remember, we put the three years in. It's not anything in statutory law that says you do it three years.
Yeah, we can change it. Yeah, we can change this. So what, Councilman Diana, what's your, you want to go two?
Either eighteen months or two.
What's easy, is, is eighteen months or is two, I think two years?
And do you have the people to handle if we, let's say we did every two years?
Right.
That's the next.
We're, we're not sure of what it's going to look like because it has never been done. So this is, this is going to be all new.
And you also have to properly communicate to the property owners if you're going from three to two.
Right.
And you have to figure out how many of those.
You have to change the code and then we.
Yeah. I mean, you gotta, you gotta do some homework on this to figure out how many.
Yeah.
And if your, if your staff can handle, you know, the increase in, in meters that you have to get reported.
Exactly, exactly.
There's going to be some additional work added to the department by going to the two years.
You know, the first year, when you have your input from, um, it's always that first year that you begin to put that input in. That's your, that's your worst year.
Yeah.
After that, it, it becomes a piece of cake.
Right, right.
So, may I say, how many commercial user, large user, because they are, they're using much larger than homeowners? That's for sure. So, you know, uh, if they, the, the, what we should do is calibrate, just we did it before. So you have a standard, they're listening, is it a hundred thousand gallon? This is the old version, this is new one. That, that should be done at least for the largest user. Otherwise, you know, they're going to have a war, you know? And how much it costs, just roughly, you know?
So.
Hundred thousand dollar, uh, hundred thousand gallon per?
So the town, we just had a couple of meters tested that we purchased water from the town of Newcastle. Uh, there's a, I think it's a four inch and a six inch. I think they were around twelve or fourteen hundred dollars a test.
Yeah.
That's part of the, the cost of doing business, though.
They're very large.
But the, the, the one thing that, that I would like to add, and so I was talking to the meter professionals, uh, the people that purch-, you know, that make the meters. Uh, so let's just say if there was a meter, if, if the test is twelve hundred dollars, let's just say for argument's sake, and the meter was from, installed in the eighties, okay? There is a very good chance that those meters are not running efficiently.
Sure.
And the problem is, is being that those meters are so old, there's no parts available to repair them. So if I was a commercial property owner and I knew my meter was from nineteen eighty, I wouldn't pay somebody twelve hundred dollars to test it. I would put that twelve hundred dollars towards the purchase of a new meter.
Correct.
Right? So that, that's one message.
An educational factor, yeah, absolutely.
That I'd like to get out to you.
Now, Ken, I don't know, you know, we were just having a little sidebar discussion about the fact that, uh, like our fire inspections, you have some places that are bigger fire hazards that have, or potential that have annual. So, you know, looking at it, restaurants in particular, you know, I know my water usage was crazy because, you know, the dishwasher, the sinks, the bathrooms. So I don't know, I don't know if, uh, if you, if even something like that works. So we have a one year and a three or two instead of moving everyone.
So ju- just to clarify, for the commercial water meters, what, what the definition of that is, is any water meter that's in one inch and a half and larger, right? So this does not apply to the three-quarter inch or the one inch, which you would typically find in a residence, okay? The inch and a half meters.
It's just by size.
Sorry?
It's by size. Size is what qualifies.
Yes, yes.
We're talking shopping centers. Um, we're talking commercial buildings.
Commercial buildings, condo associations.
Yeah, and, and.
Schools.
You know, the idea that you have a meters from nineteen eighties. I just said, Matt, they're older than you are.
And, 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 and.
They're off for placement at that point, right, Kenny?
Exac- and that's my point. And nineteen eighty, Alice, it's, that's probably one of the newer meters if, if I had.
Really? Is that right?
Yeah. We've had some meters where you can't even see the numbers on the dials. And the readers are out there and trying to figure out what this number is and.
Well, we know we have a history of paying for certain shopping centers' water. The residents paying for it.
Right. And, and I, I, I strongly urge the, the board to.
So if I can ask you and, and Mr. Rodriguez, if we can come back with, I'd, I'd like to see a, a more formal proposal.
Okay.
From you, um, whether or not it's, you know, just the, the penalty, or if we're going to try to do a sliding scale, or if we're going to, you know, go from three to two, or if you want to, you know, do three years for, and then, then two years, you know, we can, we can put a qualifier in there in two thousand twenty-two. You can go to every two years if you give yourself time to, uh, be ready for it.
Okay.
You can do that as well.
You can send out a letter prior to the public hearing, um, to all of those people, um, explaining that, um, we are going to update the code and, and they're welcome to the public hearing or whatever.
Absolutely, yeah, we have to, yeah.
So, you know, so that we can be sure to hit them to make sure that they, that at least they got some information that we were going to change.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Let's take, Kenny, another thing, you know, I, you know, there is one building and then they expand the building, right? Uh, you know, they're, they're using a larger amount of water. Some people, the plumber, who could have directly passing the meter, you know? Those, those things are exact, you know, they are already example like that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
So, you know, you, you are, you know, using large quantity of water, uh, and, uh, you know, we are not getting money right here, okay?
You just want, that's what I was about to say. We're not charging them more to do business, we're just making sure they're in compliance.
No, absolutely, yeah, you know, but.
Until Kenny's point is we're just making sure they pay their fair share.
Whatever, yeah, and, and actually, you know, you know. May I say something else? Uh, they have a control of how much they are using every weekday electronically. If something goes wrong, the town can, you know, shut the water off or something, emergency. You save water and money both together. And it's just like a homeowner, they have electronic monitoring, you know, you, you know how good it is, you know? But it was, you know, forever the reason four million dollars was used for balance the budget instead of putting those meters, you know?
So, vision brings, you, you bring up a good point about with the, um, the radio reads, right? So let's just say for argument's sake, if half of these meters are replaced, they would be replaced with the new technology.
Right.
You know, for the radio read. So there's not somebody physically going out there.
Right.
Uh, they have it right now, uh, with, with this new program where the residents can go download an app on their smartphone.
And you're going to see it on your phone.
They can look at their usage. Um, that would answer a lot of questions for some folks.
Oh, absolutely, it would. Because I know I'm, we've been getting phone calls in the office and I know that you've been great in helping me sort through some of this stuff. And it's just having them see where the usage is and we've been able to solve quite a few problems that way.
Right, absolutely.
So when you do your public hearing, remember what we talked about in terms of all of those things that you, so that people could, can actually see that, yeah, this is the way to do it. If you have a, a smart app on your phone, you can look at your usage.
That's the newer technology and it's coming out.
For some people.
What, but what I, well, for the, for these particular meters, it's fairly new. But what I would like to do, um, at a different time, I'd like to bring the, to, to, into the work session, the meter company, and they can expand on everything.
I'd love to hear it.
There's so much you can do.
I'd love to hear it. I, I think it's investing in new technology. Everyone knows that I'm, I'm for it, so let's hear it and see what we can do.
You did a presentation.
The student lady there, yeah.
Which was excellent.
Thank you.
If you do that and you bring the meter people in with you to do a presentation on how this can work, and if we have to, like you say, you have a meter that's nineteen eighty, you can almost guarantee that it's going to be out of calibration. It's going to cost twelve hundred dollars to re-, to calibrate it and repair it, or twelve hundred dollars or thirteen or whatever it might be to replace it. Well, no harm, no foul, you might as well put the new one in. My question, one other question I had, Kenny, is, uh, backflow preventers, how often are they tested?
They're tested once every year.
Once every year?
That's very important.
And most of those are in commercial locations anyway, correct?
For the most part, yes.
Yeah. So that might be a way to, uh, get your, um, get your, your testing of the meters on schedule to where your larger locations with the backflow preventers, um, are, are one in the same.
Right, and, and you're a hundred percent right. And the program that I was just speaking about, that we have for the, for the commercial meter testing, that ties right into our backflow program.
Perfect.
That's right in with our backflow.
Perfect. Okay, so that may work out for our larger locations.
Absolutely.
Every year so that they don't, let's say, let's say IBM for argument's sake, you know? They probably have a, a ten-inch main going up there for all I know.
But they, they have a continuous monitoring.
Must have worked on it one time.
I did.
So Kenny, can you, can you and, and Mr. Rodriguez, can you guys be back here in the next work session with a formal legislative proposal for us to consider? Or you need, you need another two weeks beyond that?
And also, you know.
I'd just like to make sure that I, I have enough time to gather everything.
Okay.
I just don't want to.
I'm with you. I want you to rush into it.
To be back next week.
No, 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 do it carefully. Let's make, I just want to see this thing.
Want to do it right.
It's an issue that we need to obviously address. And so I just don't want to lose it and have it fall off the plate because, you know, you know, ten, hundred other things.
No, I, I get you.
You know, we just want the public to know, the, the residents to know, this does not, this is nothing, this is, the rate here is nothing, has nothing to do with them.
Right.
In fact, in the end, it probably is going to help you.
It's going to help them. It's going to help our homeowners.
Because it's going to alleviate some of the costs that we're spending, paying for the shopping centers' water.
So I, I talked to one of our, well, not so neighboring, about twenty minutes north, a municipality. Um, they did a meter program. Their revenue went up by forty-five percent.
Wow.
Whoa.
Because of the, you know, the risk.
So the return on investment is better than our original return on investment was with what we had been working on in the past?
They, it, it's, their revenue is forty-five percent higher.
Uh, let me just say something else to the board and, and the people. Three billion gallons of water was saved by the, all the municipality, you know, there is one organization, I have the, the, you know, the whole article and I was in contact, I contacted them. We can say like this, so homeowner benefits as well as the commercial. But the most important thing, if you use less water, you have to less purify it. And, you know, you, you know, if the more increase in the housing, uh, number of home, something, you still provide the same quantity of water from the same tank and our processing. All these things have to be combined together just to tell them that use less and save more money.
Everybody, it's a, you know, precious resource.
There was a program I thought I e-, I think I emailed over to you that you were going to take a look at.
Yes.
It was a public advocacy program just to help with water consumption and edu-, yeah, that's exactly what Councilman Patel's talking about.
Exactly right, exactly right.
So that's something that we can circle back with?
Absolutely, absolutely.
See if there's, you know, that's something that we want to.
Because there is, there is a.
Absolutely.
I like this new slogan too, use less, save more.
Use less, save more, there you go.
You know, there is a, there is, there is a national, uh, you know, conference at University of Pennsylvania. Uh, I cannot go unfortunately, I have two days, you know? But it's only twenty-five dollar, you don't even have to pay twenty-five dollar if you're a municipal guy. But it, it's involved two days to go and hotels and all that and it doesn't feed otherwise. Very nice program, all the experts from countries, you know, they are going to be there, you know? But you can go through the online and find out what they are doing because this technology is not new, you know, it's available. But, uh, thank you.
Kenny, thank you.
Thank you.
We're still under time here, right, Mora?
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
I knew Kenny was going to do it to me. Kenny, thanks, buddy.
Bye, Kenny.
Really appreciate all your work.
You missed the big presentation from the kid last week, you know? I'll give you. I know, I, I know.
And Kenny, please thank your staff for their help with the water main breaks. We've, we've been, I think, rather fortunate this season, is my sense, knock on wood, right?
We don't say that word.
Yeah, but we appreciate all the reference, thank you.
You got a vacation, that's good.
All right, next.
Thanks, Ken.
You got, we're bringing in our closer for the rest of the night.
All right.
Jim Matarano.
Three inning savior.
There you go, please sit.
Hey, gentlemen.
We have a number of issue, a number of, uh, not issues, but topics.
Bracken with me.
Tim, thank you for being here.
Oh, Tim.
Very excited to have Tim here. We've been looking forward to this for a while. Capture Point.
Capture Point.
Community Pass.
I was, I was going to say, I was going to say Nyack, New York, and, but that, that's not the right answer, is it?
Did you figure out the, uh, the presentation? Are we? No, we're just going to go with this? Okay. Is there, if there's, yeah, and, and what we could do also for your presentation, if we, if you have a PowerPoint presentation, maybe Mora, if there's a way for us to put it on the website? If he has a, a electronic presentation as well?
I, I don't believe so.
We could, uh, I mean, I'd be happy to sort of show the website, really, the, the experience.
Sure.
If you wanted to see it, I've, in these, in these meetings in the past, um, typically a, a discussion based on, you know, the, the history that we have in the area and the success we've had in Westchester County.
Yep.
Usually the discussion is enough, but I'll do whatever you guys need.
No problem. Why don't you, why don't you and Jim tell us what we're talking about, something that I know.
So if you open up these packets, you'll see, uh, the incredible amount of business they do within Westchester County.
Well, you know, this directly affects residents. You have nothing that you can put up on our, our monitors.
That's why, yeah.
Sure, sure, we can plug in, I can put something up.
Kenny, is that, Mora, is that possible?
I got an HDMI cord, as long as you can turn it on and.
You have Wi-Fi. It's Wi-Fi.
You have your laptop? Okay.
You have Wi-Fi laptop? Yeah?
Yeah. I don't think I can, I don't think I can Wi-Fi my screen onto there. I'd still have to use the HDMI.
No, no, you can, yeah.
You can start it all.
We have the technology.
Yeah, just say with Mora.
Sit wherever you want, absolutely.
Actually, why don't we do this? While you, you want, while he sets up, do you want us to move on to another thing? Or do you want to, you need to help set him up? So then why don't we, why don't we take, so why, why don't we do this?
Don't worry about it, I'll, I'll get this, I'll do this.
Do you want, do you want to take a short break? And this way everyone can use.
Sure, why not?
Do you want to take a short break this way? All right, so we're, we're just going to take a short two-minute break so everyone can stretch their legs and we can get Tim set up for his presentation. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, yeah, just a little congestion, but.
So you're going to use them to do the passes? That's good. That's so smart.
Online registration, the whole knock.
Excellent. But I won't see those people at Spark Lake in front of me anymore.
You know, you'll still see them, they'll sell passes.
Well, they had their lawn chairs and everything like five o'clock in the morning.
You'll still have your pass.
I told you we're doing this, though. Dr. Hatter?
And we are back for the work session meeting, February eleventh. Uh, we have with us Jim Matarano, our Park Superintendent, and, uh, we have some very exciting presentation, uh, to share with the folks at Yorktown. Jim, why don't you, uh, take it away for us?
So it's, it's been about three years maybe plus in the making of bringing community, can you, four years, excuse me.
That's the official shriek, we're breaking it, hopefully.
Um, bringing Community Pass into our community and allowing our residents to sign up for recreation online. Uh, not only will they have online, but it also helped my staff with a really easy-to-use POS system, uh, in my office. So, uh, we win on the front end and the back end, uh, with, working with Community Pass and, and signing this deal. If you talk to anyone in Westchester Parks and Recreation, uh, Community Pass is the appropriate, uh, vendor to use here.
And there you gave us a, and I do want to introduce Tim Bracken from, it's not Community Pass, but it's Capture Point.
Capture Point's the company, right?
But Community Pass, right? And Tim provided us a whole list of municipalities, both here in, uh, in Westchester, our, uh, Rockland. There's some in Connecticut, and I think there was one in Putnam, right? Was that Town of Carmel?
It might be Carmel, yeah.
Town of Carmel is Putnam as well. Uh, so a good list of references for us that already uses services. Um, I think in total, it says nationally, Capture Point serves nearly four hundred clients, meaning municipalities, four hundred and thirty-six states.
And schools, yes.
And, oh, and schools, thank you. So. So, we're very, very excited to, you know, be here. We met in December originally, right? And we said, we put that mile marker that we wanted to be at this point, so it's just very gratifying to finally be here. So, please, by all means, if you wouldn't mind giving us a presentation, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, so...
So, may I ask you?
Of course.
Tell the people we already have and what is new, okay?
Yeah, I mean, currently, we have a system in place where everything we do is manual v. new. So, you have to literally come into our office from 8:30 to 4:30 and bring a check or your credit card to pay with a, fill out a piece of paper. And for some residents, you know, that can be difficult, to make it there on time and fill out all the paperwork.
Yeah.
Whereas now, you can, for the first time, you'll be able to, from the privacy of your own home, sign up for our recreation programming, whether it's the pool, whether it's, whether it's camp, whether it's just your basic recreation programming, you'll be able to pay for that online.
So, we have a tax payment and many other water payment. This is wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Very good. So, just from, just to talk through kind of the overview for the community, we've been doing this now for 17 years. It's a cloud-based application, so all you need is a computer with a browser and an internet connection. So, if you're on the public side and you're operating from your phone, right here, I have the town of Cortland up right here. We can't really see that, but I can scroll right through here if I'm a parent in Cortland. If I'm sitting in the doctor's office and waiting for the doctor, which we always are, right? You can go ahead and sign up while you're waiting online, you can fill out your forms, you can sign your waivers and acknowledgements, which the town is obligated to collect, and you can also make your payment via e-check or via credit card. You can save your payment method if you want. So, it becomes a very convenient way to interact with the community or with the recreation department. You can sign up, as Jim said, with all your programs. You can do facility reservations if you want to rent a pavilion or a park, if that's something that you want to roll out. You can establish your pool membership, that type of a thing. So, this is something that's, it's really widespread across the county and across the country, and we're excited to make it part of Yorktown as well. So, thank you.
Security issue?
No.
None?
No.
Now, do they have to go on the town's website to capture you?
So, there's a website that they can go to. Essentially, there can be a very easy link. What our customers do is create a link on the website so that it would say, "Register Here." And I'll show you, I'll show you here. So, this was linked directly to, this is basically one link away from a municipal website. So, there's a link that someone in the town, who manages the town website, would put probably in the recreation page, right? And link over to it.
Right.
And here's where the family would log in. Now, I've gone one step ahead, just in the interest of time. I created a family account, and I am, I am David Bowie, the fictional David Bowie, which a lot of you should know, but many of you may not. Anyhow, so I've logged in. So, all my family information, I've created this account where I have myself, and I have two of my children in here. I can have anybody in the household listed in here legally, so that if I want to sign anybody up, I can. There's all sorts of self-service tools. These are going to be super convenient for you, for the community, so they don't have to wait on lines, they don't have to call and wait for people to respond. They're not sending emails or waiting, right? Not making those phone calls. They can view and pay balances, they can update their account information. My wife and I, we have three children. If, you know, you register the kids, now that they're older now, but back in the day, you'd ask, you know, "Did you, did you sign them up for camp, honey?" "I don't know, I forget. Did you sign them up for camp?" "I don't know, I forget." You go into view registrations, you can see exactly what you've done there.
And what I really love, I'm sorry to cut you off there, Tim, what I really love about this too, is as you're looking through a lot of the different things you can sign up for, and you have your roster, your family is your roster, if it's a class for an eight to 10-year-old, only the child that is eight to 10, well, you'll be able to sign up for. So, you're not, it's gonna avoid a lot of confusion on what you're signing them up for. You'll be able to sign up your kid for the appropriate program.
Right, prevents those accidental registrations that end up in withdrawals and refunds and confusion and roster errors and things like that. So, so lots of self-service. There's a message center, so anything that the community or the recreation department sends out, you're going to find in your message center. Any program that you register for, you're going to find all of your receipts there. When it comes time for taxes, which are coming up pretty quickly, you know, you can pull your, you pull your tax information from there and give it to your accountant to make sure that you're writing off anything you can with flexible spending.
And there's some time spent with our staff when it comes to, everyone wants their camp receipts that they don't always get. So, you'll often see around tax time, people coming in for their camp receipts. So, this would actually help us in the office a little bit with time, because the parents could just do it straight from the, from the website.
Now, would they be able to send you their medical information about the kids as well?
That may be a separate app we may look into purchasing. At this point, they would still have to come in and give us that documentation. I don't believe you have immunity ability to download.
I would, there are wrinkles that you might need additional, depending on the Department of Health and the requirements that they have, but you're gonna see, I'm gonna go through a registration here, you're gonna see how, all the information that needs to be collected about a family, whether it's emergency contacts, or authorized pickups, or allergies, or, right, best friends, or favorite foods, or nicknames, you can collect all that in Community Pass, so that you don't have to collect all these paper forms. And then you can access it in the database, so it's always right there for you. It's, it really is terrific, so...
And the information provided to the Parks and Recreation is property of whom?
That is a fantastic question, because sometimes in this industry, you do not, you do not own your data.
Yeah.
Right? So, some companies will monetize that data, they'll take that information and sell the lists and try to monetize it that way, contractually, and your attorney has reviewed this, you are the owner of the data. We don't use any of your information, it's completely secure, and it is entirely yours. So, it's something that we kind of hang our hat on, you know, it's kids, it's families, you don't want to be given that, that information.
Mouse is a dangerous thing to have.
Exactly. So, there's a translate button here to be sensitive to folks that maybe are not comfortable with English as their, as their native language, so they can go ahead and translate the whole website and do their business that way. I'm gonna jump into a registration here. This whole page here is customizable, so that the recreation department can be as fancy as they want. It's really the content that's going to be, gonna be adjustable, as opposed to the template, which is fairly fixed. Here I have the process where, there's a different workflow to do a registration for, say, a park pavilion than there is for a recreation activity, but most of what you'll be doing is going to be recreation activities. So, I'm gonna click in here, for the purposes of keeping your data nice and clean, so you're not working with bad data, right? Garbage in, garbage out. This is basically a verification page that you can choose either to use or not use. It's there for you, but you can sort of eliminate it from the registration process. So, I'm a family now, and I'm the David Bowie family, and if I want to go and register for somebody, I can come in, here I can do a keyword search, I can search, if I scroll down a little bit by, I can search by age, I can search by grade, gender, when the program begins, locations, if you have multiple locations. I can search by program groups, depending on how you want to set up what we consider here as your catalog, your online catalog, kind of like an Amazon shopping experience. And we also have something called a family filter, which is really cool. So, if I say, you know what, you know, I'm the parent, I'm David, but I want my kids to do something together, so let me do a family filter, show me what's available to Bergen and Zoe Bowie here.
Oh, wow.
So, I can scroll through here and see that all of these programs, both of my children are eligible for. So, if I want to sign them both up for, say, Tai Chi, I can say, okay, they're both eligible for it, fantastic. Here, it's gonna roll out different sessions, so you might have an AM session, you have a PM session, you might have intermediate, you might have advanced, you have full capability to roll out all the different programs. You're gonna see eligibility here. Eligibility can be by ti, it can be by date, can be by gender, can be by school, can be by residency, can be by age, whatever it may be, so you have lots of tools there. Dates and times, schedule information, price and location. Here you can see there's a different price for a non-resident than there is for a resident, and the system will do that right out of the gate, so that your non-residents are actually paying more. And you can go ahead and share on Facebook and social media, if you prefer to, send it via email, if you want to share some information with somebody. But for the purposes of continuing through the demo, you're gonna find that it's a very linear process, so people don't get lost in, in this process, they complete it very quickly. On average, our tables show when there's not some guy like me talking too much while you're doing the demo. It takes about two and a half minutes to complete a demonstration, to complete a registration, which is super fast.
Two and a half minutes instead of going, finding the time to go, standing in line, either standing in line in the rain, as, I know, I see Kevin Byrne over there, Kevin Burns, he tells stories about how he had to stand in the rain with his kids to get, you know, registered for stuff, so just, just makes it that much easier, more efficient, both for the, for the user, which is our residents, but also for our staff.
Yeah, very efficient, it's gonna cut your labor costs significantly.
That's good, Jim.
One of the things that Jimmy told me, you can't do today that you will be able to do with this, is that if I'm at work and I'm having a really bad day, if I decide to scroll down pages and see that there is a yoga class or a meditation class, I actually can go and register for that class.
Right there.
Used to be I'd have to run home, run to your department, hope it doesn't close before I get there.
We're seeing a huge decline, I mean, this is, you know, wide for people that don't have this online. In Mount Pleasant, when I was there, we didn't have online either, and we just, in both towns, we've seen a huge decline in adult registration, because adults are now are busier than ever, whether you have one or two jobs.
Totally.
You're working overtime. There's no way you can make it in in our hours, 8:30 to 4:30 to sign up for a class that may be going on at 7:00 or 8:00.
That's it.
You know, we have programs that go on outside of our office hours. So, to give adults the opportunity to sign up for programs is a huge opportunity for them, it's something that they haven't been able to do in years. So, I'm happy to actually, not only the kids win and the seniors win, but also your general adult, your general taxpayer will actually benefit from this as well.
Tim, I don't know, do you, would you have, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you have any, any data that's, that shows us how much growth your clients have seen in their rec programs once?
It varies from, from department to department, from community to community. If I could, if I could answer sort of...
Of course.
Qualitatively?
Yeah, please.
The communities in Westchester, communities in Bergen County, New Jersey, which is where we're based, communities in, you know, Fairfield County, Connecticut, you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
There are different, there are certain types of communities, they lock into this much more quickly.
Sure.
People want to be doing things.
Yeah.
You're generally gonna see an increase in program participation and an increase in revenue, so it just depends on how much. At some point, you'll actually get to the point where you're probably doing 80% to 90% online registration.
That's what I told you, yeah.
So, you know, people are not...
I was reading the testimonials out of Jersey, and they were saying that they had a migration of up to 90, 95% in one instance to the online platform.
Yeah, and I think it varies, and when you're talking about growth, depending on the program, right?
Always.
So, pools and camps will always be kind of at max capacity, right?
Of course.
But you're making the taxpayers' life a lot easier.
Yeah.
Whereas when it's just individual programs, like kids programs, adult programs, or even some senior programs that they have to come up and sign for, those numbers will skyrocket immediately.
Right, I mean, what we're talking about, making it more convenient for, for families, right? To do things like the camps and the, and the pools. But we're also, what we're really talking about, quite frankly, is revitalizing our rec programs.
Right.
By giving people an easier option and engaging them in a way that they're able to, like you said, Alice, you having a tough day?
I'm gonna take a class.
There you go.
Some butt.
That's it, and, and it's two clicks away, you're two and a half minutes from registering, and off you go, you know, and it helps, it's a win for, you know, I think it's a win for everybody.
And the good part about it is that people can suggest what they, the classes they'd like to see.
Absolutely.
You know, they don't have to just rely, if you want, they can write into you guys and say, "Why don't you do this kind of class?"
They don't have to just write into them, they can also email ideasforyorktown@yorktownny.org.
Yes.
I had to put the plug in.
I have a question for Mr. Bowie.
They're scheduling their games, you know?
David Bowie.
I have a question for David Bowie. That's a great point, and Tim can collaborate as well. It also has a scheduling aspect to the website as well, which will help us in the office also.
Yeah, because, you know, you know where to come early, late, because all the schools has the same hour, on and off, and then in between, okay?
Councilman Diana, you got a question?
Yes, for David Bowie there.
Bring it on.
For the pool passes, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but we have two types, resident and non-resident?
Correct.
Okay, how will the program differentiate between resident and non-resident? Or is that something that the staff will have to look over?
Yeah, we'll have to work out some of those kinks.
Okay.
You may be able to pay online, but to get your card, you would still have to come into, come to us.
Okay.
With your ID, and two proofs that you live there, your current address, and then we would print you out a card. So, that would maintain.
Okay.
But at the very least, you'd be actually prepaid, so you don't have to fill out all that paperwork when you get there. You would just have to prove that you're resident. We would get the roster that you've paid, you're good to go, just a matter of checking your ID and printing, and taking your picture and taking your, and printing out your card.
Jim, correct me if I'm...
So, that won't change, but it will make this process a lot faster.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're looking to implement this in phases, right?
Right.
And so, the first phase is our rec programs, because that's the easiest thing to do. Second phase, correct me if I'm wrong, are our camps.
Correct.
And then the third phase would be our pool passes, because there is a verification requirement. And, and so, we are still working internally to figure out the most efficient way, because again, and Alice, you know this because from being the town clerk, I mean, how much data do we actually have in, in town hall? I mean, it's a lot. So, we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what data points can we use that we have internally to make that process easier, so...
Well, the interesting part that eventually, if you own your, own your house, the, your department could match it up against the assessor's records.
I agree completely, yes.
So, the, the hard part would be if you're renting.
Right.
Then you physically probably would have to come in.
Yeah.
And we might be able to do that, to your point, so you're, you're cutting down the demand for people to physically show up in that aspect. So, that's still, again, it's a phased process, I think, is how we're approaching this. Rec first, camp second, pools third, and that gives it staff time to acclimate with the new program. It gives the public time to understand the new program, but it also gives us here in, in government time to make sure that, you know, the verification processes are in place, the, you know, the necessary documents for camps are able to be processed, and so we're not fully rushing into this headfirst, but taking that piece by piece.
Sure.
So, Jim, is there any picture ID part of the things, you know, sometimes you may have a picture, you know?
Yeah. Is, is there a place to put a picture on the website for the different people on your roster?
Make sure I don't skip past that question. The answer is yes, but I also wanted to address Councilman's question about validating different membership types.
Great, please.
Sometimes you have a difference in residency, and you want to make sure that the, the non-residents are paying a premium, right?
Right, exactly.
That's the way it needs to be. You don't want them sort of scamming the system and paying a resident rate, nobody wants that. There's also, it has very, very strong validation tools, so that in some communities, you might have a family pool pass that you pay a lump sum for, and a family is defined as two adults and two other full-time family members, or two children. And then our system is intelligent enough to determine that if you try to sign up three other people in the family, you know, maybe Grandma, Grandpa, and Uncle Joe are living in the house, it will detect that, and it will apply the adult, each additional person price to that, so that, so that, so that the community and the town is actually collecting all the money that it's due, and it's not being gamed, because the system isn't intelligent enough to keep up.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, so it does, it does all that.
How about the stepchildrens and like that? I mean, that's another, you know, requirement.
That would be, that would be more of a policy internally, so if you want to set up, you have a stepchild or somebody in the family, maybe an aunt and uncle, maybe somebody who's not well, and you want to take them into your home, you can make them part of your family. It would be the policies internally, the recreation department, to determine how you treat them with regard to pricing and registration rules.
What type of protection from outside intrusions on this system? There's a lot of personal information on there.
So, this, it's all SQL service, it's all PCMs, or, yeah, PCI compliant from the standpoint of credit card processing, PCI is the payment card industry, it's DSS compliant, so we've never had any issues. So, we've been in the cloud, so we've been in the cloud for 17, we've been in the cloud for 17 years. Now, no, no, nobody is, nobody's fully safe from being hacked. It's, it's an impossibility. The nice thing about Community Pass is we're, we're not a high-value target. It's not, the information that's kept on Community Pass is not what people are looking for. They're not looking for names and addresses and phone numbers and email addresses. They're hitting the places that have the credit cards, and we don't store the credit cards on our system. Our system, it stores them someplace else. So, in addition to being secure in the first place, firewalls, right, password-protected accounts.
But you know the data mining, you know, I mean, that's another big commodity, you know? And you can, you know, distill anything you want out of there. The age, distribution, the what you use, what games, and then they have their own advertisement, you know, the commercial comes in here also, you know, and you click it in, they say, "How many people like the baseball?", you know, manufacturing, so many other data mining, which we have to be careful, you know?
Sure, sure, there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's criminal minds out there that if they can get their hands on the information, fortunately, we haven't had that issue, because we have strong security.
I think like you said, if we're gonna focus on something like that, then we're not gonna move.
No, they have to careful, like, you cannot give away free kit at your home, you know, to outside, anybody can get in there. People open the window, they get through that too. It's getting complicated, I'm not saying...
People are still welcome to sign up by hand.
Well, that's the other thing, they don't have to sign up online. Correct, yeah, they can always come to the office, Councilman Patel, they can always come to the office. come to the office. We're not, we're not trying to discourage people from coming to the office. We're just saying.
No, this is really good.
This is, this is another option, a more, you know, frankly, and for some people, a much more convenient option.
You'll still be able to pay cash, you'll still be able to pay by check.
Right.
No, this is a good program.
The in-hand options is always gonna be there. You can still fill out the registration form.
Right. You can do, you can do it any way that you're most comfortable.
Yes.
But this just gives us another option that we currently don't have.
Jim, do we store stuff like that on the computer anyway, which sort of?
No, there, there is no storage of any credit cards, so.
No, not credit cards, but the information. We put it anyway.
We do store addresses and names and ages.
Down, down, down.
Is this a system that we currently use, just an expansion?
No.
Brand new.
Okay. But it's something similar.
I'm a non-technical guy.
But a major upgrade.
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
And functionality.
Yeah, no, no, no. This, this is like Big Brother.
Yeah.
Maybe I invent a phone, but not.
Great. Tim, can you continue with the demonstration?
I can. So here I'm, here I've, I've clicked through. In, in the previous page, it rang up the first, the first child at $75, the second child at $70, because the policy, the pricing policy was to give a discount to the sibling, right?
Okay.
So it automatically calculates that, right, so it can support your pricing rules. And now it's gonna ask for the information. These are, these are forms and fields that , that Jim and his team will, will basically dictate, so they can ask as much or as little as they like. They can make fields required or not required. Here you can see, if you notice, I didn't, I didn't type in any of this while, while they were chatting. This is all auto-populated. So there's auto-populate settings that you can turn on and turn off, just a nice convenient feature there. If the both children have the same, same information, you could click same as above. Again, just trying to help people get through that registration process with as little effort as possible. So I'm gonna click through here. All that data now is stored in the database and accept, accessible through our reporting engine. Here is our different codes of conduct, legal waivers, policies, so on and so forth.
Sorry, that's okay. Do you have a code of conduct? Does the Parks Department, or Rec Department, excuse me, have a code of conduct that?
Yeah, I mean.
We do have something similar?
Yes. We can post a code of conduct up there, for sure.
So, but we have one, that's my question. Okay, great.
And that's becoming a little bit more important because, you know, the world's just becoming more and more litigious and then the town needs more and more protection. Some solutions can't support multiple policies. We have some customers now that are putting on six, seven, eight policies that you have to acknowledge before you can register and pay. It's not ideal, but it does protect the town.
Yeah, okay.
No problem.
And you can see it's a very linear process here. This is a third step, which can be eliminated from the registration process. If you don't want to collect donations, remove step three, and you'll end up with four total steps.
Great.
But donation for town?
Donation for anything you like, anything your heart desires.
Well, I don't know.
I don't think we don't want to do that.
Okay, you can remove that.
The point being, the point being is we can remove that step.
Right. Optional feature there. Right? And you can, then you get to your final page. You can see that Zoe or Bergen pays 75, Zoe pays 70. If I want to remove anything because I've, you know, decided I don't want to do it, or I can pay by credit card, e-check. This is a demo account, so I'm not gonna pay by credit card, but it would be the normal page that requires all your credit card information there. And so we go ahead and send payment.
Tim, can you tell us which credit cards we're gonna be able to use?
Sure. Visa, MasterCard, Discover, and American Express.
Don't leave without it.
Right, exactly, exactly. So here you go. And this is our final.
Or stay at home with it.
Finish. And if we want to go back into the registration process, we can. And that, so that's, that's the public side of it. The, the administrative side of it would probably bore most of you to death unless you're in Recreation Administration, so we don't want to go there.
But we did go through that with our staff. The staff is very excited about taking this on and having something that's very user-friendly.
And I understand also in the contract that there are trainings for the staff as well, web-based trainings that you're gonna be able to provide to our staff to make sure that they're efficient in the program.
There's a guided implementation. In layman's terms, we're gonna hold your hand through the whole thing. We're gonna do a lot of the work and apply our expertise of many, many years to get it set up properly, to make sure that the validation rules, the residency rules, the requirements, all the documents that people need to submit, the forms, the information that needs to be collected, the reporting, the financials, all of that is gonna be buttoned up. Then we'll go ahead and we'll train you, and then we'll launch it, and the community will be thrilled.
I always loved doing, working with a company, not in the beginning. Once you've gotten like 20 customers and they've worked out the kinks.
Right, right.
Then I come in.
And that's another reason, though, that we want, we think it's important for it to be phased, because I don't want to tell people that they're gonna be able to get their pool pass online from day one.
Yeah.
Regardless of the verification structure that we have to come up with. But I want to make sure that, I think, I think the rec programs are gonna allow us to ease into this.
Correct, correct.
And make sure that we are proficient and effective and we've got the whole thing down before we start taking everybody else.
I think a lot of young people will be very happy you're doing this.
And administratively, only the, the department head or your subordinate, they control the, the data, who, you know, registration and who.
And just to go further, we've worked with Mr. Rodriguez here on the contract as well. So they, they've gone back and forth and they finally have an agreement that both the town and Community Pass can, can really be happy with.
I think it was the first contract we sent to Adam, actually, to review.
It was.
Thank you, Adam.
He did a stellar job, so thank you.
I think, any other questions for Tim while we have him? Or anybody?
Congratulations to us.
Thank you.
Tim, we appreciate it. And I told you, what did I tell you when I saw you, right? I told you I was gonna break the streak.
Get it done, that's right.
I told you I was gonna break the streak. So.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
We're very excited about bringing this on.
Thank you and congratulations. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
All right.
That's great.
So we will move that forward at next week's meeting.
Jumping in the 21st century.
Yep, we'll move that into the next week's meeting.
I feel like Buck Rogers.
Jim, don't go anywhere.
I'm not, I'm not.
All right, next, we're gonna invite Matt Talbert. I thought, was Al coming?
No, he couldn't make it.
Al's not coming?
He can't make it.
Okay.
Hey, Matt.
Hello. I'm happy to see you're feeling better.
Thank you.
So Matt is one of our Parks and Rec Commissioners. We appreciate you being here. And I know that you've been very involved in, I think, all the things left on the, on the, on the docket here.
Everything but the golf course.
Every day.
Everything but, everything but Tom Diana's favorite golf course. So.
So just to go further, the, I know you guys remember this, but the commission approved a camera project. Signal Intel has done an amazing job in setting up those cameras.
Adam, please.
And we've, we've worked with the police on, on making sure that they have all the appropriate links to access our cameras, which is very important. But there is one camera that.
Okay, sorry.
That's fine. There's one camera that we are having issues with at Legacy Field, and the best spot to, to use it is on some of the pipeline property and, and some of their devices. So.
They're gonna take the money from us now?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, absolutely not.
$1.2 million.
This, no, no, no. This camera will benefit both us and them. Make sure no one's on the pipeline doing anything, make sure no one's coming into our park illegally.
Yeah, right.
So this is just a basic agreement, once again. Mr. Rodriguez has looked over, at least has been sent over recently.
Yeah, it's a very basic agreement. I think there's some probably wordsmithing things that I love to do to it. And there is one sort of significant issue that I think, you know, we can discuss now, if you want.
Yeah.
But basically, the way it's written, it, once we install the camera and the equipment, the way it's drafted, if they damage it.
Who's "they"?
Enbridge.
Enbridge. We're basically on the hook and they don't have to pay for it. So.
They, they don't use this specific area much, but once again, it doesn't matter. They could use it once and.
Yeah.
But anyone could damage it. It, it's, it's in a very vulnerable area. It's going to be high enough to be out of reach.
Yeah.
But.
I don't think they would intentionally do anything to damage it.
I mean.
Yes.
Whoever damaged it, we'd have them on camera. We'd still have that recorded.
Exactly, yeah. Adam, thoughts?
Look, I certainly have no reason to think they would intentionally damage it. The point is, the way it's drafted, they could and we would have no recourse. So, you know, I can, we could try to soften the language. I'm not sure that there's enough money there to worry about if it was damaged.
Yeah, how much does a camera cost?
About $285.
Correct.
Plus installation.
Spend, spend more arguing it out.
Yeah, exactly.
That's also correct.
I agree with what you're saying, but. Yeah, look, it's, it's.
He's not paying us hourly.
That's a policy.
He's not charging us hourly.
It's a, it's a policy.
Those other things are on top.
I just raised, it's a, I just raised the issue.
No, I appreciate it. No, no, Adam. Mr. Rodriguez, thank you. Okay. You want to do this right now? Or you want to?
We'd love to get the ball rolling.
Would love to get it rolling.
Second.
How many cameras?
Contingent on Adam reviewing.
Yeah.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second, so there's no contention.
There's some just tweaking language that is proposed, but.
Oh, oh.
Otherwise, it's fine. Only one camera is on this.
Hold on, we have a, well, he wants to.
You want to make the motion with any tweaking that Adam needs?
With amendments?
All of them except that.
Okay, so the, so do we have to recall that first motion, or can we say the motion is on the?
It's motion with amendments.
Motion with approved amendments from the town attorney.
And a second by me.
And a second by.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
So there'll be one list, which will be monitored by Enbridge.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, no.
No, they have no control of the cameras.
Oh, oh.
No, no, we, we are in total control.
Great. All right.
And then who will be monitoring it? Who is it gonna, recording?
Our Parks and Rec Department.
Oh, you have a separate, okay.
So, so we, we've obviously had a lot of deal with contractors throughout the years, and you've kind of noticed that the town itself does not have a lien agreement per se, and language ready to go in case we, we need a lien agreement with the vendor. So in this case, just came up with one of our companies, one of the last payments we had to make over at Granite Knolls, and it's just something that, you know, wanted us to take a look at and possibly have.
Circulate?
Yep. Adam has more specific language on, on the lien release.
Can you explain this to Adam?
Well, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez, can you just explain this to everybody, please?
And I think this will help us with future contracts. In the construction industry, a lien release waiver is basically, you can think of it as almost like a receipt for payment.
Okay.
You generally don't release funds under the contract until you get a lien release waiver. And they usually go in stages. It's usually progress payments under a construction contract. So if the project is 25% done, you, you, before you pay the 25%, you get a lien release waiver for 25% of the amount. So it's basically proof that.
Oh, okay.
And if, and that's essentially what it is. It's a, it's a release of any right to, to lien against the project or the property, et cetera, for the, you know, the amount. And what we're talking about here, the stage we're at in a specific project that, that came up is, it would be a final lien release waiver. And generally, you know, the general contractor will get them from the subcontractors and the, and the folks that provide materials, because it's in their interest to do so too, because the funds flow from them. But so we're, we're gonna work with the, the, the main contact point to make sure that, you know, we have that online on, on this project.
Usually the town would go through a punch list with all of its departments to make sure everything they've gotten in place. And usually, sometimes there's a five-year window between plantings for wetlands that it's gotta remain on the books for five years. So, yeah, this is, this is fine.
Another question, you know? Is this different than a warranty?
This version, he already made amendments to it.
That's different than a warranty, yes.
This is a rough draft.
This is just gonna be boilerplate for us?
To keep the town from being held liable. I've, I'm developed, we're developing a boilerplate document to be used. They're gonna have to be modified project to project.
Of course, of course.
But, yeah, that's, that's the intention.
Okay.
And so, to be clear, the, the town is not signing this. This is a document that's signed by the contractor.
We sent it to the contractor.
Yeah, you sent it to the contractor and I get it.
Typically, the way this works is, in the contract with the contractor, there will be language for a lien release attached that's already, you know, negotiated.
Correct.
And that it's a requirement under the work.
You know, now it's officially open. Do you have any kind of document for the town board that how much, how, how much is a warranty for each?
We do, we do have warranties on everything up there, but.
Yeah, but we don't know, you know, I mean, we don't know that you need the money, so we want to make sure that we'll have in a budget, you know, or something.
Money for what?
Whatever something goes wrong, you know, if you have to, you know, if it's not covered, we have to spend the money, right?
You have, you have warranties on all the equipment.
We have warranties on everything that's up there. They've already come back and did some warranty work. That's why we actually have a final payment. We held back 5% on them.
Do you have a copy of the warranties for Granite Knolls in your office that you're aware of?
No, probably not.
If we can get a copy of the warranties, this way if Councilman Patel has questions that he at least has a central.
Yeah, I believe there's different contracts per, the buildings that we're specifically talking about are the bathrooms.
That would be in your big documents you have all, I'm correct?
That was a, that was a purchase off the buy boards.
Correct.
So it's not really a big document. It's the, it's in the invoice itself.
Right, exactly.
But that is a product, you know, warranty for deficiency or defect. This is, you know, the kids came in and they caught quite a few already fences, already bend up, you bend up, you know, the wires and like that, you know? Those kind of vandalism type things, you know? So, do we...
As long as we know we have them.
Do we need to give someone money? Because this has already happened three, four times. I've seen it, you know?
Again, I just, I would feel more comfortable having a copy produced and left in the town attorney's office, just so that we know it's in one central location. So, if any of us have a question, we know where it is. If any staff has a question, we know where it is. Just safekeeping.
Do you guys use the new system, the computer system?
The KVS system?
No, it's...
What, the work order system?
What was the system that I came back for? Do you remember the name of it?
No.
Okay, because that system was set up for this exactly, where it takes a project. It takes the project from the beginning to the end.
To the end, yeah.
It has everything in it. You know, I'll talk to Jimmy about it later.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure that they're used.
All right, let's move over to the next item, town code updates. Why don't you start at the... Why don't we sort of ball fields and work our way back?
Okay. There's a number of items that, just kind of going through the town code of things that, you know, reflect on recreation, that are a little bit of...
I didn't mean to mess you up. You have paperwork. So, why don't you, whatever's more convenient for you.
I can go in any order.
Go in any order, okay. I didn't want to mess you up. I apologize.
So, there's things in this, in not only the things I had prior, we're more on the local code, but this is more on the state level when we're talking about the ball fields. It's always been told to us that it was illegal to advertise on our own fields, that we couldn't do it. But there's... Luckily, we have a town supervisor that actually wrote the law on this. So, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, you did have this come up on your desk.
We had this come up during my tenure with Senator Murphy in the State Senate. This, what we did for the town of Newcastle, they wanted to put signage or sell sponsorship signage at, I believe, three of their parks.
That's great.
And so, it requires state legislation and state authority to do it. We have the legislation which was passed and signed into law in front of us. I have, last night, I emailed both Senator Harkum and Assemblyman Byrne to let them know that this was going to be a discussion item tonight. And they offered their full support in any way they can provide it. And they're happy to pick up the torch once we hand it to them, hopefully, and run with it.
And that's great if we can get that torch moving. But we discussed this, where the town code comes in, is we need to decide what kind of signage we're going to put up there. Can we just let anyone put up any color, any kind of thing? Or in our town code, are we going to be more specific with what they're putting up? We want to manage the beauty of our parks. So, I think it's important to maybe mention that in our town.
So, I think, but I agree with you. And that's something we're going to have to address. I would recommend, and Alice, you know this from your experience here, we need to move on this rather quickly, because the legislative session ends in June, actually, it ends earlier this year. And they're already pushing local legislation through their process.
Yeah, we need to...
So, I think it's a dual track. So, I think we have to do a dual track to make sure we get the authorization from the state to initiate this program. And then, in the meantime, we can work with our department heads to come up with the proper language for our code.
Well, and the good part is, we have a gentleman from YAC there.
Is that what his shirt says?
He can work from outside.
Yeah.
And tag on to our letters of support, because I know for years, you said you wanted to do this.
A support letter from YAC, you know, SOAC, YYSC, you know? The other thing that we need to be clear about is a board. And so, let's go through the... I would recommend from the board is to pass a resolution next week, laying out really what we're looking to do, so that this way our state lawmakers basically just plug and play. They have this legislation. I sent it to them. Their staff has the legislation. So, they have the model. We just have to give them where we want it to go.
Right.
That's great.
And what it's going to go towards, because one of the things that you have to deal with is, I just can't go to the general fund. And so, you know, that's a conversation that we can have, you know, in the next meeting up to this.
I like in their law that it goes back into replacement and refurbishment of things at the park. It should be going back to these fields.
Personally, I would like to see it go right to turf replacement. I would like to see the money go right back to turf replacement. You know, we did have a conversation, I had a conversation with our comptroller about this specific issue. She agreed that that was probably the best decision that we can make regarding this money, because...
I don't think people understand how expensive it is.
Yeah. And the gentleman in the YAC sweatshirt who's going to write a letter of support has been harping on turf replacement for...
How much money?
Quite some time.
Each turf field will be about $500,000 to $600,000.
How many years?
Yeah.
Twelve to fifteen.
Twelve to fifteen years. So, we need, and so, we're already behind the eight ball in some aspects, because we need to build the reserve, right, to be able to spend the money.
The turf replacement line is currently at $250,000. And we're at year nine of the field.
Is that for legacy?
Correct.
And how much is the preventive maintenance? You've got to do all the time, continuous maintenance.
Well, no, but this is specifically for turf replacement, not to be swept and used for maintenance. So, this is going to soften the blow.
I agree with you, I agree.
Because as Matt and Jimmy just said, you're looking at at least a half a million dollars, if you're lucky, to get the turf replacement done. We are only halfway there. And if you think about the timeframe, we're looking at three years.
And this might get the legislators...
And then, once we spend that, I'm sorry.
Because it's such a big-ticket item.
Well, we didn't use the field for three years. Does that make any difference?
That actually, from what I'm told, it hurts the field.
Hurts the field.
One year.
One and a half years.
It was shut for a year, yeah. So, I would...
The more it lays dormant, the more it hurts.
So, I would recommend to the board, you know, it's two things. I think we need to take this in stride. So, I would recommend that it's Granite Knolls and Legacy is the two places where we're able to do this.
Right.
Number one. And then, number two, I think it needs to be specifically lined for our turf replacement fund.
Oh, we agree.
So, that we have a long revenue stream going into our turf replacement.
I have another light item that came up in the commission meeting. If you look at our line item for turf replacement fund, it specifically only states Legacy. We might want to look into changing the name of that line, where it says Legacy, or All Turf Fields, or Legacy and Granite Knolls. I don't know what the appropriate language will be, but there's something we want to be more specific on.
Pat will probably put another number.
I did speak to Pat about that, and I thought that the request from the board was that they were separated.
No, they should be.
So, yeah, and she said that they will, and depending, a lot depends on how...
I don't agree.
A lot depends on how you guys...
I don't know. Wait, hold on, let's think about this.
I don't agree with that at all, but...
You don't agree with separating the two?
No, not at all.
Why?
Look, we have a line that's deficient. We don't have enough money. So, if we take...
Why would you separate it? I agree with you.
So, why would you separate when you can create enough money to then raise for the one field we need?
So, then all we would do...
The field's not going to go at the same time.
Yeah, no, exactly.
The infield or the baseball field's going to go, and the outfield may not go. And one field...
But I think to your point is, we should include Granite Knolls, so it's not just Legacy fields.
Yes.
Legacy fields and Granite Knolls.
And then, once Legacy is done, now you're starting to raise money for Granite Knolls.
That makes more sense. That does make sense.
Thank you.
Jim, there is something here. It's a sale of advertising. It is a sign, and the size of the sign, the color and everything.
That's my aspect with the...
That's all TBD. And that's something I want to bring John Taggert in as well, just from his expertise, you know?
Like rotary with a nice sign.
But, yeah.
Electronic, this will be electronic sign mostly, right?
Well, no, no, no. These are going to be on the outfield, you know? Ideally, what we've been discussing is putting on the outfield fence. So, it's not electronic. You can't, you know, that's probably not the best idea for...
No.
Banner-type signs that you can hang on the backyard fence.
I would definitely recommend against banner-type signs. We do have a little bit of a wind issue up at Granite Knolls.
Yeah, but it's more about, you know, Jimmy and I had this conversation. You're going to make everything green and black.
It's going to look nice.
But we don't know. We have to make that decision, you know? And that's something that I think, again, dual-track, so we can make sure that in the code, it properly reflects.
Yeah, it's coordinated.
Size and everything.
Yeah.
Exactly. And you're amazing at transitions, let me tell you. Because you brought up John Taggert, and I have another issue with another item in the code.
He's not here anymore.
Yeah, I know, but I did...
He knows when to run.
We did talk about it. I'm going to have you look down at H. H is what affects me, but this town code is the lighting code. But H is what specifically I'm here for. And Matt, can I elaborate on this?
Yeah, Matt, I'd like to hear you speak on this.
You know, why didn't you give us a week before? Because I have a leaky memory, you know? I can't read this much faster like a computer, you know?
Well, you only have to read the bottom line that says H.
Sign it, all right.
H is the only line I'm asking for you to look at on the bottom.
So, H currently reads, "Sports fields may be lit provided the lights are only on when the field is in use, and the light fixtures are fully shielded and properly aimed at the intended field of play."
Now, we have the most up-to-date, high-tech lights that there are, LED lights, that have no spill on them. You do not need a shield on these lights. They're not condensate lights like the ones.
So, our lights currently don't have shields.
They, well, that's not necessarily true. Some do, and we didn't necessarily have to, but it did help a little bit. But you didn't need shields on every single one to create spill issues. We had some lights that were aimed a bit higher to catch different parts of the outfield and such.
I get you.
And so, some of those lights do have shields, but it is not required on every single light that we have, because the technology has changed over these years.
So, you're saying the fully shielded piece is what...
That's my biggest issue.
Fully shielded should be removed.
Should be removed.
You know what? This hasn't been changed in 25 years.
Right.
Yes.
Probably didn't have the technology 25 years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it's fun.
Condensate lights, you needed to have shields to keep the spill from happening. Now, the light themselves...
With the LEDs, yeah, right. I get you.
But, you know, do you have some kind of a dimming type thing, or certain lights goes off and nobody's there, you know?
This is something I'm just bringing to your attention. I don't need a decision now, but I did talk to John Taggert.
Do you have a recommendation of what the language should be changed to? Or if you spoke with John, what John's recommendation was?
I think we can get recommendation.
Yeah, I think, you know, when he goes sit with plenty of words...
We'd eliminate shield lights, shields on LEDs.
Because, again, not all of our lights are fully shielded. That's the issue.
Correct.
What about properly shielded? Because I know that we've been getting some complaints about the amount of light that's up there during these games and so on and so forth.
If we want to talk about Granite Knolls, we are at the top of a mountain. Everything else around us is below us. If you look up, you're going to see the lights. There is nothing that could be done. We've re-aimed the lights. Jim and I walked around with an illumination gauge and looked at what the spill is. So, if this tables the field, over here, we're dark. I can turn off one all-purpose field, and one will be totally dark, and the other one is lit.
You're looking at about like 15 looms in the middle of the field. And then, when you step into the parking lot, .02. I mean, it's unheard of, you know? It's unheard of like 10 years ago to even have that conversation.
Oh, that's incredible. That's incredible.
Well, let me tell you, it's what kind of material. The light is made up all the colors of the rainbow, okay? So, if you shine it, you know, the red one, and the green, green will absorb and everything else will reflect. So, depending on what things shining on the light, you know? Right now, this light is coming, everything is white, right? All the color of the rainbow makes it white, that's why it's white. If you take it out, red one, it'll come red, blue, green. So, this is kind of things to be adjusted, and LED is different than this light.
Well, the lighting system that we purchased for Granite Knolls is highly technical.
It's got TIF lenses in it that aim towards the location we want the light to go. So, that's one of the main reasons why we don't need the shields on it.
Right. So, in clarification, there's a difference between being able to see illumination and spill, because I think that's where people are having the issue. And by the definition of spill and what is required, I believe we are far beyond what the requirements are in spill.
That's correct.
Because of the technical aspect of these lights.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no.
Just to put a fine point, I agree with Alice. I think we should just engage John and Adam, just to make sure...
We have some really smart people.
Yeah, I'm sure there's other things in this lighting law, too, that are a bit outdated.
And that's what they do.
So, maybe we do ask our planning, our town planner, our planning board, just to take a look at...
Both of them to help you, because that's what they do.
But I was going to say, just take a look at the law, just the code itself, just see if it needs updated.
It's old.
Which is fine. While we're looking at this one piece, you might as well look at the whole. Mr. Rodriguez, yes, no?
They've never finished.
There's more stuff, more stuff for Adam.
You go to any stadium, right? And there are thousand cars, different color.
Some of them are shielded.
But each one has a reflective coating, okay?
So, up at Granite Knolls, in the outfield of the baseball field, we have some homeowners that are nearby.
Okay.
So, we took some extra precautions there to knock the light down and make sure that it was not bleeding into their yard.
Right.
Can they see the ball fields? Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But all the car park all around, they reflect the light anyway.
Properly shielded.
That's certainly true.
The cars have no...
To the same time, it gives us opportunity to go and update a whole thing.
There's no problem with the cars.
Yes, yes.
You know, even the reflection off the cars, we do not have a problem.
The lights aren't hitting the cars, that's the thing.
The lights are not getting to the cars.
And you know what? Ultimately, they went, they put them down, and they're fine.
Yeah.
So, this thing...
I had one last issue with the town code. Okay. So, we've kicked the can on this for many years, you know, all my time with the commission. And it came up at the commission meeting as well. Where do we stand within regards to smoking in our parks?
Smoking and vaping.
Sorry, excuse me, thank you.
Smoking and vaping.
There is a low... The commission looked into this a couple of years back. We loved the Lewisboro, hold on, these two. We love the Lewisboro code on smoking. So, here I have our own town code, and I had the Lewisboro code back to back for you guys to kind of take a look at. And, you know, many towns throughout this great state of ours has gone away from smoking. I mean, when you think parks, you're thinking about public health. So, you know, is smoking a place for our parks? That's a question for you guys to take on.
First off, the first thing that jumps out at me is the fact that our code does not recognize vaping or e-cigarettes.
It also has smoking in our public buildings.
Once again, we have a dated aspect of our code.
And I'm sorry, what was that, Councilman Lachter?
Alcohol. A, this has to be, the whole law has to be updated. A, all smoking within the town halls would be confined to the baseball field.
This is really strange.
Well, yeah, well, no, that's because it's so old. I think they changed the law, if I'm not mistaken, back in the 80s.
No, 1990.
No, no, the smoking law.
Well, the question becomes, the other question, and I asked Mr. Rodriguez, I don't even know, is our code in compliance with the Clean Air Act?
It's not.
Certainly not.
So, if we're not in compliance with the Clean Air Act, I mean, I, listen, it's something that I've discussed with my staff about, you know, town facilities, and I'm glad that the commission has brought this forward. Clearly, another need for us, again, the fact that we don't, it does say smoking within the town hall. Who would have thought?
Certainly not.
Somebody wants to smoke out of their dad's kitchen.
If you smoke in town hall, it's not against the law.
It has an overreach to town facilities while I was still at Clark. We did, we do...
I'm stressing that right now.
We do bingo over at the Elks Lodge.
Yeah.
And I had to go over to the Elks Lodge and explain to them, the people who sat there smoking cigarettes while they did bingo, they could no longer smoke cigarettes. And that was 100 years ago. And so, and again, the state was the one that said, you've got to do this. It's acting as a town facility. So, I think we have the right, whether it's a park or anything.
They've actually, they've increased the smoke, the no-smoking laws, restaurants, bars, all of that.
That's excellent.
Yeah, I remember when I managed a nightclub, the nicotine and smoke on my clothing used to make it stand up the next day, because it was so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, white shirts would be yellow.
This is fun.
Disgusting, poppers.
Supervisor, I have a question, okay?
50's, 60's rock and roll club.
You know, is the town parks, any place here, if somebody had the open can of bottle or something, beer or wine?
I'm sorry, was that the councilman?
If any alcohol beverage, they will arrest you in a town.
Right, right.
Okay, so then, what?
Well, I mean, I really want to thank the commission for bringing this to our attention. I mean, it's just, obviously, we need to take a hard look at this.
Certainly vaping.
No, I mean, you want to have, you know, rental out, place a party special, maybe they need a permit, but individual is just...
Is there a lot of people smoking in the parks?
You're speaking about our pavilions and stuff like that.
I think the biggest issue with smoking is really our events that include our parks. You know, you'll have certain bigger events where there'll be smoking cigars or cigarettes or what have you, and where people are stagnant in place. That's kind of where we have the biggest issues, where you're in someone else's, you know, private space and, and they're smoking like right in front of you. That's where we have our biggest issues with smoking. But yeah, we certainly find cigarette butts in our parks and our guys have to clean them up.
I know, I know we have Mr. Strauss here, I'm sure Mr. Strauss sees a bunch of this over at the track.
Remember at LAX, you have to go all the way down to the back.
For the city.
Little, little enclosure. If you want to smoke, you can smoke.
It was like a cubby, he can smoke in the cubby.
And, and so maybe you can consider something like that.
All right, so we appreciate it, we're going to definitely have to update this because it's obviously obsolete, so.
You know, the birds in any
The final, the final item on the agenda, did you want?
I, I need to add one more thing that I don't have on here, I'm sorry for adding it.
Yeah, that's true.
I've been working with the town comptroller on, as some of you may know, our, our trucks for our parks department have depleted over the years. And unfortunately, we came to you, the town board, before Matt was here unfortunately, and, and asked for a util, a utility vehicle to set aside some money. So you granted me the PO, thank you so much for that. But unfortunately, the, the County Ford Mercury, Inc. did not have that vehicle anymore. By the time we finally got the PO and everything was good, they're like, oh, we don't have that utility truck anymore.
After September, the trucks go away.
Correct, and that's exactly around the time that this, we were granted the PO. So after talking to Pat, she said, all right, well, we'll hold on to the PO, you get, you try and work something out. We weren't able to work something out, but January 1st, essentially, we put together a mini bid. And at that point, we, we've gone through this process and I have the two people that bid on this mini bid right here. So we, we have the two vendors and, and we liked the, the person that gave us the lowest amount, which is on the top here.
For the trucks?
This is for the one truck, the one utility truck. And I've since released the, the PO 1902627 and back to the general fund. So what I'm here today is to request that money back to execute this mini bid.
Yeah, you gave it, you're done. You're done, Jim. That's it, you lost it.
You knew I got swindled.
No, no backsies, Jim.
You gave it back.
He said that about his daughter when he gave it away.
I'm sorry, I didn't print enough out for, I only had one copy here.
And I know we had a, you had a conversation with our comptroller about this.
Absolutely.
Watch this money back.
For many months about this, yes.
And our comptroller is comfortable making this decision, making this
Publicly announced, how much money is that?
Forty-four thousand, was that?
Is it, is there any difference?
So, that's a great question. The PO was for 69, excuse me, 46,329.75. The new bid is 45,135. So we're actually saving money with this whole
Oh, all right.
Okay, we give you your money back.
All right.
We give you your money back.
I'm going to have the comptroller draft the necessary resolution for
I'm coming for next, meet a guest.
So you have your money back.
Yes, thank you so much, I appreciate it. We could certainly use a truck.
But it's only one vote.
You're the first department head that ever gave money back.
Next item, last item on the agenda?
Last item on the agenda is the parts we golf course. I love coming here every week to talk about this project.
And you're going to keep coming.
And we love hearing from you.
We want to know when it's going to be done.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm not going anywhere, so I'll, I'll keep coming. So there's, there's been some movement, not a ton of movement. We, we met with the RC Recreation Development and John Taggert. He walked us through the whole process with planning. He had laundry list of packets we got, they had to fill out. So, and he also asked them for the parking plan, the stormwater plan and the, and the tree plan. But also, at the same time, we're meeting with Michael, we're meeting with Michael Quinn.
Sorry, I'm just making sure you have questions.
We're meeting with Michael Quinn to go through the more pertinent issue, which is the DEC violation that we just had on that site. That was a non, non-financial
Non-financial violation issued by the DEC.
Correct.
But who will pay for the material and all that then?
They have to pay for all the material.
Right.
So, but right now, we have 10 days to get that, that information into DEC. We have met with Mike and we've since filled out all the paperwork, got the backup documentation, and that's really where a lot of their efforts were going to because that has a tight timestamp. So that is in the process of, we're in the process of getting that DEC permit, which is extremely important. We really can't do anything else until we get that. So that's where I kept focusing their energy. Unfortunately, we were going to meet with planning yesterday to kind of give them the status update. Both gentlemen fell ill, so they couldn't make the meeting. But we have rescheduled for the 24th, I believe, of February. They have since gotten an email, it's the next time that they meet for a work session. So we are on the planning work session for the next, next time they meet, and this will give them a little bit more time to get through those packets and get through all the other plans that were needed by John. So we're moving, we're communicating.
It's a work in progress.
And, you know, I'm looking forward to golfing at some point in the next year, you know?
It's a work in progress and I know, you know, we, our department heads have really done a fine job coming together on this thing, once, once we learned that there were issues. And, and so I just, again, want to thank all of our department heads, especially you, because I know you've taken, you've really managed this issue personally and doing a fine job with it, and we just want to get it across the finish line.
Can I just ask one question about, so right now, we're DEC.
Yes.
Not DEP, but DEC. Once we're out of their hands, because generally, they don't like to keep us in their hands that long. Once we're out of their hands, where are we?
Then we're in that planning process of going through piece by piece with plan, with planning that we have the appropriate parking, so there's not a traffic jam every time someone goes there. We need to then go into the stormwater aspect of, with, when they do their construction, not the construction, when they, when they do their, when they mediation and when they fix up the golf course, will the stormwater go to the appropriate places because it is DC, DC wetlands? That is also required
I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused.
With the DEC permit.
Because that is something that the person that got the lease
Correct.
That's, that's their job.
So just to catch you up, which I've said before, Rocco had a lot of this work already done, so it was, it was kind of easy to fill out the DEC paperwork.
Yeah, I remember.
Because a, a lot of it was already done, but it's, it's basically, the best way I can explain it is, imagine a puzzle. You, you have all the pieces of the puzzle, but they're in the box. So unfortunately, Rocco died and all these pieces of the puzzle were not put together and someone just put out all these pieces on the table and now we're trying to
What I'm saying is that you, as the head of Parks and Rec, have gotten your, your hands in so many different things. This, I'm saying, this is a company that will benefit, we will benefit obviously, but this company will also benefit. And part of their responsibility is to meet with, to have met with, our planning department. So it, you know, I, I hear you and I feel you, but you know what? I don't know who these, I know it's Rocco's partner, he needs to kind of get it together and, and, and you need to, because remember, he's the leaseholder, he makes money.
I, I, I agree.
You know, I think everyone agrees with you, Alice. There's no doubt about it. There was clear miscommunication and, and if you want to say mismanagement from, from the town's pers
Yeah.
From the town's perspective, to make sure that there was, again, communication and they understood the process, possibly.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, once a, a issue was raised, we had Jimmy, we had Jim from Parks, we had John Taggert, John Landy, Mike Quinn, we were all in my office and we, and within 45 minutes had a process that we were going to put forward and that's what we've been following.
Is that in writing though, on a piece of paper?
I just don't want him to burn out.
All the process and everything else.
Well, no, he's, he's doing a lot, but this is great.